Evening, everyone. I would like to open the session for the Coventry School Committee. If we could have a roll call, please, Mrs. Martin.
Kathryn Patnood.
Here.
David Florio.
Yeah.
Luke Murray.
Here.
Donna Colunian.
Yeah.
We see you. James Pearson.
Here.
Craig Levis.
Present.
All right, could I entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we go into executive session at 6:01 PM.
I second the motion.
Excuse me.
God bless you.
Thank you.
You look great, Craig. You look like you look good.
And could we have, could I have a roll call vote on that, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
Dave Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colunian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five to zero. We're going to move to executive session and to any of the public attendees. We will be back here around seven, I believe, or seven, correct?
Yes.
Oh, 6:40, I guess it is.
Okay.
All right, we'll see you on the other side. Thank you. I think we're going to open the meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the open session of the Coventry School Committee. I have 6:41. And I'd like to start with a moment of silence as we consider the work before us this evening. Thank you, everyone. So just to, I believe, Mr. Pearson, you're on to read our mission statement. So if you could do us the honor, please?
Yes. The mission of Coventry Public Schools is to inspire, support, and challenge all students in an inclusive community to be critical thinkers, effective communicators, reflective learners, responsible individuals, and global citizens.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pearson. And just to notify the public, the school committee met in executive session for about, I don't know, half hour or so. We considered, we approved our executive session minutes from April 15th, and the vote was four with one abstention. We also talked, discussed two litigations. And both of those were discussed and no votes were taken. So that being said, is there a motion to seal the minutes of our executive session?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the records of the executive session be kept close pursuant to sections 42-46-4, 42-46-5.
I second the motion.
Thank you. And could we have a roll call vote, please, Mrs. Martin?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colunian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the approval of our minutes from 4:15 that were in our packet, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 15, 2021, as presented slash.
Luke, do you want to take that?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kathryn Patnood.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colunian.
Yes.
And James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the public agenda, for the citizens gathered during the public agenda, the remainder of the agenda items on our agenda for this evening are open for discussion. So citizens can make comments, ask questions. If any votes are taken, we will call for the motion. But before I call for the actual vote, we put it back out into the public, and so the public can comment on the topic at hand. That being said, I'm going to move to the first agenda item in the public, which is the celebration of Skills USA medical recipients. And so medal, sorry, not medical, medal recipients. So, Mr. Craig, did you want to start? Oh, wow. Mr. Levis, would you like to start this?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Patnood. So I'm excited tonight. You know, we started this a while ago, celebrations, and there's so many things that we can continue to celebrate that we'll be bringing forward. Our cheerleading squad, they recently just won a first place state title for a game day chair. And because everything we do, it's all about our students and our families. And I'm really excited tonight. I know I shared with the committee that our career tech students that participated in Skills USA brought home seventeen medals, which I think is, and Mr. Reed will correct me, and Ms. Ferguson, that's, I think that's a record for Coventry. If not, it's pretty close. And, you know, let's not forget that we're in the midst of a pandemic, you know? And while we all know that these are extremely difficult times, I can't state that how proud we are of our instructors. Mr. Reed, that's helped facilitate Skills USA, but most importantly, our students. So I know they weren't all able to come tonight, but I want to turn it over to Mr. Reed and to our medal winners and go from there. So, Mr. Reed, I don't know if you want to say a few words, Ms. Ferguson, and if we can introduce the people that are on the screen, and maybe they can tell us what they want, and then the committee can share some comments. Ms. Ferguson, you're muted.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. And Mr. Reed and I are very excited to be here tonight with our winners. All seventeen could not make it because some did have to work, but we do have many of our winners tonight. So I would like to introduce everyone, and then I would like to have Mr. Reed, who was our Skills USA advisor, say a few words just about the competitions and how difficult it really was in this year to successfully complete the competitions this year. So I'm going to go with gold medal winners who are here tonight. First, we have Justin Stankowitz, who won for commercial baking. We have Ashley Klingberg here tonight, who won a gold medal for criminal justice. We have Juliana Aguirre here tonight, who won a gold medal for medical math. Nope, first aid CPR. And we have, is that right, Juliana? Medical math, right?
Medical math, yes.
And Jackie Broder is here, who also won a gold medal, and she won that for first aid and CPR. And then our silver medal winners, we have Gianna Cabral, who was on our crime scene investigation team. And is Amy Lebrun here tonight? I don't see her, but she did say she was coming. I don't see her. She was also on the team who won a silver for crime scene investigation. And then we have Grace Avila, who won a bronze medal. She won a bronze medal with Amy Lebrun for crime scene investigation, Team C. And then we have Alexandria Mulligan here, who won a bronze medal for restaurant service. So I think I got everybody. Did I miss anybody here tonight? I don't, Hayden St. Germain, who won a gold medal with Alexander Lang for cybersecurity, although Alex could not be here tonight. He had to work, but Hayden is here, so he too won a gold medal. So our gold medalist winners will go on to compete in the Nationals. In the Nationals, also virtual is a very, a very complicated competition because it's virtual. So Mr. Reed has all of those details, and I would like to thank Mr. Reed. This is his third year as Skills USA advisor, and he has always had the largest number of competitors. And I think it's because he is so enthusiastic about skills, really gets kids involved throughout the year. And so we are, our number of competitors has increased, I think, since he's taken over. And he's got a great executive board. His kids work hard for him. They work hard for themselves. So I'm very happy to have Mr. Reed as our advisor. So, Mr. Reed, take it away.
I wanted to thank everyone for inviting to the school committee meeting tonight to recognize these champions. For the record, in front of the committee, I simply answered an email three years ago to Mrs. Ferguson, and since then I've become the advisor for Skills. So I have to give these kids a lot of credit for stepping up to the plate in a very tough year, like Mr. Levis had said. So these seventeen kids competed against kids throughout the entire state and either received third place, second place, or first place. So just to mention one, the cybersecurity team with Mr. Catell. That was the first year ever competing in that program, and he won gold. Many of the other ones, health careers, and the ones that Mrs. Ferguson had stated. So these kids are awesome. They've already stated that they want to get forward with an executive board next year. It's tough this year with the pandemic, but everyone is very, very involved, and I love skills. And I'm so happy that the kids did as well as they did, because this is, like he said, like Mr. Levis said, this is a record for these kids this year in the school. And I have to thank Mrs. Ferguson for the support of anything that Skills needs. We do a lot of things during school now. But these kids just yearn to get together and do skills. I think it's great. So I want to thank you all for recognizing them as champions.
You broke up a little bit, I think. I don't know if it's me not hearing, but did you, did everybody hear a breakup at the end of that? Yeah, so the champions was lovely because it was sort of like this contracted statement. So even though you didn't have the best connection, it was kind of a nice, a nice ending. Before I move to the school committee members, because I'm sure they may have some accolades to share with all of you, I just was wondering, we really don't want to put you on the spot because I know it's tough. But if there's someone who would love to speak and tell us your experience, and maybe thank anybody, your team members, your teachers, you know, you can just raise your hand on the screen and unmute yourself, and we'd be glad to hear from you. I know this is such a big group here, and I don't want to pick on anyone quite, you know, without, because I know how that makes people feel, they're put on the spot. So is there any brave, oh, way, yay, Ashley?
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, yes.
So, skills for me, I got involved my sophomore year on the executive board, and it really kind of helped me be more comfortable with speaking in front of people, the way that I held myself. You know, it's a great opportunity for students, especially with the pandemic going on. We got shut down. We got quarantined. There was a lot of mental health issues among our school. And so I think being able to compete and work with Mr. Reed, and I just want to say thank you to Mr. Reed and Ms. Ferguson for giving us that opportunity, because it really helped me a lot, and I know it helped other students a lot. As but like, for, I won gold in criminal justice, and I'm in criminal justice because I want to be a cop. And I feel like that, that experience already gives me the upper hand, because it's like, I kind of know what I'm doing with certain scenarios compared to other students that didn't compete in skills.
Well said. Thank you so much for volunteering that. And obviously, you do have skills in public speaking. So you've developed the confidence to actually raise your hand and speak for your classmates. Anybody, other brave soul that wants to say something? Come on, I know there's some of you out there. Okay, Juliana, I see your hand raised.
Competing in school, skills, wait, can you hear me? I just want to make sure.
Yes, we can. Yep.
Me competing in skills, an amazing experience. And I was supposed to compete last year, but COVID had other plans. And without my teachers being there to support me, honestly, I wouldn't be able to do it without them, Mrs. Farrell, Mrs. Ferguson. And it's definitely amazing. Like, I really wish I participated in it my freshman and sophomore year. I just love it. And it also is a great opportunity for anyone that feels like they're too shy, like just to step up, and you know, you can do it. Yeah. And like, because I was always so scared. So I feel like if more people get included, like, they won't be too shy, and they'll feel like, you know, you can do this.
Well, obviously, you proved yourself correct, that you can do it, and just all your fellow classmates did it as well. And like, it's already been said, this year and the end of last year, doing this virtually, it's really, really, really tough. I can only imagine. Anybody else feel brave enough to say something?
I would love it if they each just said one thing that was amazing for them, like what kind of an experience, if they just said one. And, and I just wanted to point out that we have sophomores, juniors, and seniors here tonight. So it's amazing that we have sophomores who have won medals, and if they could say one thing.
So, Mrs. Ferguson, could you call them out, because you know them all? And your other teacher, administrator, so.
I'll start with Justin, Justin Stankowitz, who won commercial baking. Say one thing that you found a good, to be a good experience.
I think a good experience was how close you get with your teacher, first of all. And like, the support that all of our teachers gave us this year was outrageous. Like, Mrs. Ferguson was always there for you if you needed anything, and like, the teachers were just there for you.
Okay, how about Alexandria Mulligan?
I thought it was a great experience to be able to do this before I graduate, because it shows like how much the culinary, culinary class has affected me throughout the years, like how close I got to Chef Kelleback and Ms. Andrews and Ms. Ferguson. And it showed in my performance when I competed.
You're on mute, Mrs. Ferguson.
Hayden, Hayden St. Germain. Cybersecurity.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. I was, I was in a similar situation to Juliana, where I was supposed to compete for the first time last year, and then COVID hit, and I didn't get the chance to. And I'm really glad that I got to this year. And I also got to compete in Cyber Patriot, which was also a fun experience, and we placed second in that. And this is definitely some, an experience that I'm going to take with me forward.
Thank you, Hayden. Hayden's a senior, too. How about Gianna Cabral for criminal justice?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, the overall experience was really, really great, and I want to thank Ms. Ferguson and Mr. Reed especially for being able to give, like, me and my team the opportunity to do it. And we practiced pretty hard, and really, it was, it was helpful with what we want to do in life. And it really just gave us the skills to be able to accomplish it. And I really hope that next year we're able to do the same.
Gianna's a sophomore, so she has two more years to compete. Grace Avila, she is also a sophomore and in criminal justice.
I'm actually a junior, but I am in criminal justice. And I think the thing that, it's okay. The thing I can take from this entire experience and from last year is that you learn how to work with others very well, not only the skills you have in your competition, but you learn how to work with your entire team and with the teachers and with the people judging you, which I think is super important, because you learn a lot of personable skills.
Thank you. I just want to say that on behalf of the administrative team, guys, we are so proud of you, and thank you, and thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferguson, and thank you all. I'm glad that Mrs. Ferguson put a little prod on asking you for your, you know, your best experience. That being said, I'm just going to go quickly through the school committee and see if they have any comments or accolades for you. Mr. Pearson?
Just congratulations to all the medalists. Your hard work is paying off. It's, it must feel really good, and thank you for representing Coventry so well.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mrs. Colunian?
I want to say congratulations. First, thank you all for coming. I know, you know, it's a school night, but thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts and your thoughts with us. And congratulations to all of you. You work hard, and it pays off. Hard work always pays off. So good luck to you and your future endeavors. And for those graduating, we'll see your graduation. And for those that are still with us, there's next year and the year after. Good luck.
Thank you, Mrs. Colunian. Mr. Florio?
Hello, Mr. Murray.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Murray. I missed you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Murray, you're next.
Maybe you could have gone. Mr. Reed, first, thanks for answering that email, because, you know, you set the example right out of the gate. You step up when everyone else seems to step back, right? And all the competitors did the same. You know, it's tough to step up and be bold and compete and take a chance, and you all did that. So you were immediately winners right out of the gate, whether you earned a medal or not. But you did earn medals. Some of you are going on to national competitions, so I applaud you. I wish you good luck. And I want to thank you for, for representing our district very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. And finally, Mr. Florio?
Madam Chair, I had the honor of supervising many individuals who were interns in probation or parole. And a lot of them came to me. And one of them was Karen Raposa, who is a nurse, single mom, raised two kids on her own, and has done exceptionally well in life. The other is Earl Reed. Earl came to me as, as an intern at the home confinement program when I worked the electronic monitoring parole. He was a special, special young man who wanted to be a police officer. He became a police officer with WARC, and we have the honor of him working for the town of Coventry in the criminal justice program and being a teacher in the criminal justice program. He has a lot of enthusiasm, and he's probably one of the best interns I ever had. He really is quite a guy, nice guy, nice family. He brings that to, to his teaching. As you can tell, his students love him. And he is, he's a very great man to be working with the youth. And he's done exceptionally well, and they have done exceptionally well with Mrs. Reed, Mrs. Ferguson, Mr. Reed, and the, and the students that the USA, the USA recipients, the Skills USA medal recipients. They make this town great, and it makes, it makes us feel like we're accomplishing something on the school committee. And it makes me feel like we're actually accomplishing things at the high school in a pandemic year. And it's, it's really great. And that's what I have to say, Madam Chair. I'm proud of them all. And thank you, and I look forward to seeing how you do in the finals. Thank, thank you all. That's it, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Patnood, before we go, can I just recognize the students who weren't able to be here tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay. So Alex Lang, who was with Hayden St. Germain for cybersecurity, won a gold. Jackie Broder won a gold medal for medical, for CNA and first aid. Mackenzie Bolton won a silver. Kayla Kennedy won a silver. Sarah Chaudry won a silver. Connor Bignarski, Nate Cofaro, Amy Lebrun, and Matty Dietzel won bronze medals. And I hope I didn't forget anybody.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't, Mrs. Ferguson?
I hope not. If I did, I apologize.
Hopefully, everybody. And if you did happen to miss one, I know that they're in our hearts today, and we're congratulating all of them. And before we let you go, obviously, I'm going to ask the public if they want, if there's anyone there, like maybe a proud parent that wants to say something and/or a teacher. But before I do that, I do want to say that you guys are amazing. And you should be very, very proud of yourself. So happy that you were able to join us tonight. These celebrations really, truly are the favorite part of being on school committee. The school committee in general, all of us just absolutely love this piece of the stopping to celebrate in the district, as well as some of our teachers that have gotten accolades across the state. So you guys are real special. You have special interests, and you've done great. And so to earn a medal the way you have is just a wonderful, amazing accomplishment. And you should all be proud of yourself, and your teacher should be proud, too, as well as your parents and families. So congratulations. I'm so happy for all of you. So I will invite the public. I see we have about thirty-two people attending our meeting tonight. If there's anybody who would like to make any comment, please raise your hand. Yeah, looks like there aren't any parents out there that are going to embarrass their children. So.
Actually, we do have one that just raised their hand.
Oh, yay. Okay, if you could bring them in, Mr. Murphy, that'd be great.
Sure. Connor, you're up. If you could just state your name and address for the record, and unmute your microphone.
Okay, hi, guys. It's not Connor.
I see the last name, so.
Just a correction. Yeah, it's not Connor. But I just want to say congratulations. Skills USA for me is, is really a special thing. In our family, my daughter was a gold medal winner, and I feel like she gained so much confidence and so many skills in going through the whole process. So, you know, when it was canceled last year, we were so bummed out for you guys, and watching you come out this year, you know, it was, it was so hard to get your practices in and, and do all of that, but you really showed a lot of determination and got that done. And I just also want to say to Mr. Reed, he is an incredible advisor for this. Like, Skills has been one of my favorite things. I always go to the Skills USA ceremony every year. And just the excitement around it, since Mr. Reed has taken over, has been awesome. And we've seen the program grow and just become a really popular thing to do at the school, and I hope it continues to grow for years to come. So Mr. Reed will have to continue on. And even though you didn't get the award ceremony, Mr. Reed and Mrs. Ferguson put together an award ceremony at the school. They, we were able to watch the awards live, and it was exciting, and it was fun, and it was just nice to honor everybody that night. And we had a lot of laughs there, too. So I just wanted to congratulate you, and you should be really proud of yourselves. We're really, we're really proud of you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Mayrum. I'm so glad you were able to comment and join us. Thank you so much, Mrs. Mayrumber. I'm so glad you were able to comment and join us. Um, is there anyone else out there? In Zoom land?
Doesn't look like it.
All right. Well, I think we all need to have a virtual clap for all these kids. I have my mic on, so you can probably hear me. I hope you can hear that clap. Um, we applaud you all and um we will let you go because I'm sure you have other things to do with the rest of your evening. And um, so please um feel free to sign off if you'd like. And um, again, thank you so much for attending tonight. Um, we really enjoyed your presence. So thank you, everyone. Okay, so. Um, oh, you you're welcome. You're welcome. It was a pleasure. Um, okay, moving on to item number seven, which is the proposal from Upcycle Collaborative and clo- for clothing bins at the Coventry Public School property. Um, and so there's, I believe, Mr. Lewis, you might want to start this.
Yes, I know Brett is here from uh Upcycle and um just want to. So. Thank you. Um, I know I shared the proposal with you from Mr. Robichaud and and his company. I know recently we've had some concerns, had concerns with some of the, specifically one of the goodwill boxes, but that uh I had that removed. Uh, that was at the high school. Um, you know, this provide does provide a service. Unfortunately, people are taking advantage of it, not just in Coventry. But I live near four boxes from St. Vincent de Paul and, you know, I witnessed it's in a parking lot of a supermarket and people just dump everything there every, every single day. And it's 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 a shame, but I know that uh this provides a service to our communities. Also, Mr. Robichaud, his uh business is in town. They have the recycling business with the town. And it provides resources to our schools in terms of financial resources and um he's committed to make sure that materials are are removed, you know, within the same day, which is the agreement we had before. But obviously during the pandemic, it became overwhelming. So um, I know, Mr. Robichaud, you're here. I see you uh. If uh you want to. There you go. If you want to, um, if if the committee has questions for you uh based on the proposal. I know you still have to go through the permit process and you know, the through the town, we still have to work out with the individual principals and and. But uh, like I said, from my end, I'm more more than willing to support if, you know. I I just want to make sure the committee, any questions the committee has, they have the opportunity to to discuss with you.
I appreciate it, Craig.
Um, thank you, Mr. Lewis, and thank you for being here, Mr. Robichard. Um, so I'll start with Mr. Pearson. Did you have any questions? I know it was our reference number one. Did you have any questions about the proposal or you'd like to comment?
Uh, no, no direct questions. I just uh strongly recommend that, again, there is a town ordinance that we we should follow that. Ordinance to to the uh, the T, so to speak. And and I do like the proposal put forward to do with the more frequent checks of these bins. Uh, I hope that ensures that we don't don't encounter the the same sort of issues we had with the goodwill bins. As as Mr. Lever said, it's an unfortunate situation uh where people just dump their stuff. I have lots of pictures over the past year of, you know, furniture, vacuums, other various things that were just thrown, thrown there when it really doesn't belong. And it's it's counterproductive because when people use these as their personal dumping grounds for trash, you know, it it, no one sees the benefit of that. Uh, especially the the people who were trying to help with these. Um, so I don't really have any direct questions. I do appreciate the information and I I look forward to um, again, once again, having bins here and and hoping they're they're better uh maintained. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Um, Mrs. Clooney.
I don't have any questions. I just like uh Mr. Pearson said, I'm looking forward to to having bins again because I just went through uh and cleaned everything out. And I had to go to the Salvation Army and and uh they have the same issue that we were having at the schools, you know. It's just unfortunate. It really is that, you know, um, that that has to happen. But uh, I am looking forward to to having bins again. So thank you.
Thank you. And yes, it's I I can echo everyone's sentiment. It's it's our biggest issue mostly for the competitors that aren't local. So the good news is we do drive routes around the schools um every weekday. So that is the, that is the thing. And our 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 main hub is in Coventry as well, and we work very closely with Kevin at uh at the DPW and his and his team.
That's a real positive. Um, Mr. Murray.
Uh, I do have a couple of specific questions. Um, one is in the proposal, it was kind of broad in the language. There wasn't any sort of specific dollar amount. I know you had outlined a little bit the last time. You had spoken about what would be provided monetary value to the schools. Can you just outline that again?
Yeah, absolutely. So um currently through our curbside uh pickup and commentary, the town typically receives about three hundred dollars based upon that. And with the bins on the greenway, they receive about two hundred seventy dollars. Um, a lot of times people give percentages or or um, you know, uh, almost a dollar amount to the pound. And what I realized was that was a little difficult to convey. So I can tell you the dollar amount, the dollar amount is three cents per pound, but it's not out of an actual whole dollar. Because we don't receive that for the clothing. It's actually closer to about ten percent of our revenue, uh, not a percentage of our profit. So we do take it out of the revenue as opposed to our profit, which I'm sure would be uh slimmer than than the revenue. So I hope, does that, does that convey kind of all the bases that you're looking for, Lucas?
Uh, yeah, so you, it's ten percent of your gross out of the box.
Correct.
Okay, so I guess I, you know, I just typically see that baked into the agreement that we're actually signing. So that that's a little bit of a concern to me that that's stated upfront in this. And you know, I would, I would just ask that maybe that's baked into the letter.
I I, oh, I have no problem putting that right into the proposal. There's, there's no worries about that.
That's helpful. Just so everyone's on the same page of what's being provided and for the. And then if we've already had this discussion, I won't belabor it. These have been issues in our own town and other towns. I I expressed this before. I believe you answered this the last time. What happens if a bed mattress, clothes, other items end up outside that box? Are you capable, willing to pick it up? And is there any back charge or reduction in that monetary benefit if you have to do that?
It's one hundred percent our responsibility. We take total ownership of those bins and location. Uh, we never want to be a burden to people that are welcoming us to have the clothing bins on their properties. That that to me is a major issue uh for these companies that are not picking up the trash in a prompt manner. Um, of course, I'm trying to work on people dumping in its in it in itself, you know. I've been speaking with uh the RIDM, uh, police officers. One of the nice things is, as I do own a martial arts gym, I do teach police officers self-defense. So I am trying to figure out who can actually help with the littering issue. And so that's a major concern of mine, not just for our bins, but I like to see a clean Rhode Island and I like to see clean communities. And I would like for for that to somehow get curbed. Um, so that's, that's definitely what I would, I would like to get done. But within twenty-four hours on a minimum, weekends might be a little difficult, but typically we have people driving on Saturdays anyways. So I I I shouldn't see anything uh from any weekend being beyond a Monday or even a Saturday.
Okay.
Do that, do that fulfill the the question that you asked?
It did. And and again, I'm not blaming you for the bad actors out there. It's not your fault. It's, you know, unfortunately, it's the way things have gone. Um, and unfortunately.
I appreciate, I appreciate, I appreciate the the, you bringing it up because it's actually a major pain for my organization as well. And I I certainly didn't take it as, as you were lumping us in with that. Uh, it's actually a valid concern and I'm happy you bring it up.
It's a, if you find a a way, uh, solution to the littering problem or better means of enforcement, feel free to share it because we're all looking for the solution. Um, and then do we have, sorry.
I am, I will certainly share that with you, yes.
Do we have a sense of where the boxes will go? I mean, do we have any sort of plan? Are you planning at every school, certain number of schools? You have a certain number of boxes?
I can answer that. I mean, we have, we have programs, we have schools that still have goodwill boxes, so they won't be going there. But I think what we'll do is if you approve, if the committee approves this, I'll meet with Mr. Robichaud and we'll, like we've done in the past, we'll meet with the principals and discuss that with the the building principals. I think.
Okay.
They have a say of the location and make sure that it's a win-win dialogue. So that would be the process if, if and when this is approved, hopefully tonight by the school.
Okay. And and again, I I'm generally supportive. I I have the same concerns everyone else has issued. Um, I think it's natural, but I'm willing to give it a chance. Um, the one thing I would ask is just put it on the ticker list. Maybe we can get an update from um Jason Martin, you know, because he's the facilities. Just may, and and maybe Mr. Robichard, you could come back just briefly to give a report on how it's going, whether you're getting good, you know, um, good donations out of it, when, you know, just, just a, just as a touch base to make sure everything's good to go.
Sure, absolutely. And and um, I'm happy to share, I mean, my, I believe my contact information is is on the uh, on the proposal. But I'm happy to share my information with with everyone here, how to contact me and especially to share um my, my, my mission to uh limit trash in all the towns and communities. I'm happy to share that with you, Miss Murray.
Appreciate that willingness to be a partner in this. So I have no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Uh, Mr. Florio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Robichard. This is a, uh, this has always been a concern of mine. I use the uh clothing, I use the bin over St. Vincent de Paul quite a bit. Uh, well, because that's where I put my old clothes. I bring it to the bin at St. Vincent de Paul. And unfortunately, uh, last summer, someone threw a hornet's, a hornet's nest. I don't know what what they were thinking, but there was a hornet's nest in the uh, in the bin as I was placing my clothes in the bin. And uh, you know, why, why do people do things? You know, it's it, I applaud you for the work you do and I have uh no problem with uh with uh approving this proposal. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, Mr. Florio.
For the work you do. Thank you.
Sorry to hear about the hornet's nest, though.
Oh, well, I I called Father Goss if it was taken care of.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Florio. Um, my only comment is, um, I would just echo the rest of the committee. I think we're excited to see um a new um vendor that um is, has a base in Coventry, that has pride in Coventry. Um, I think we all support um recycling. Um, it's a good thing for this world, for the planet and for Coventry. And if we can make a little bit of money from it um for our schools, I'm all for it. And I do trust that because you're already partnering with the town and you're on those, those roots anyway, that I think um it, the coverage compared to like goodwill is going to be night and day, at least I hope. Um, and you know, I applaud you for being willing to take the good with the bad. So if there are things that you have to dispose of because people don't take them to the proper places, then I applaud you for for being willing to do that. Um, so I'm willing to give it a go. Um, and so I thank you for your proposal and I really am happy that it's a, it's a local company um with roots here. So um, I I'm going to bring it, you're welcome. I'm going to bring it out to the public. I don't know if there are any attendees um in the audience that would like to speak. And I think, Mr. Murphy, I'm sure you can bring anybody in if you see anybody.
There is no one raising.
Just as you said it.
All right. Josh, you're up. If you could just unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Josh Clements, Tangentry Farm Drive. Uh, appreciate the effort of the committee here to to focus on recycling and the efforts in the community. It is certainly a struggle. I think the town was recently fined eleven thousand dollars for poor recycling habits, even for the curbside pickup. So it is a huge challenge. Glad it's recognized and hope we can work on other programs to either, you know, further outreach or education. You know, there's great free programs or or how that can be dispersed in the schools to train kids, recycling saves us money in the long term on taxes. Talk about a budget. Um, and then what's next? You know, is there composting or other activities occurring in the cafeterias, right? That's a major source of food waste. It's getting diverted to central landfill. Uh, that's forecast to be full in twenty forty. So uh, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Clements. I appreciate those comments, obviously. Um, any, anyone else from the public? All right. Thank you, Mr. Robichard. Oh, no, we have to move. Boy, where's my brain today? Um, so is there, if there's no further questions from the committee, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the proposal from Upscales Collaborative as presented slash amended.
I second the motion.
Thank you. And again, one more time, uh, if anybody wants to talk from the public. I don't see anyone. So could we have a roll call vote, please? Um, Mrs. Martin.
Catherine Patino.
Yes.
David Florio.
Yes.
Luke Murray.
Yes.
Donna Colonian.
Yes.
James Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, motion carries and uh good luck with um getting this all up and running, Mr. Robichard.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Appreciate being here.
All right. Thank you. Have a good rest of the evening.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number eight. And I am happy to say that we never see Mr. Murphy on camera. He's always the silent partner behind the scenes during the IT for us and bringing people in from the public. And so when I saw your um face, I was like, oh, wow, we get to see Mr. Murphy today. So.
It's made for radio.
It's it's lovely to see your face. Um, so I'm going to let Mr. uh Lewis start this and I'm sure you have, um, I'm sure the committee has read the report, your report on, uh, which was our reference number four. But Mr. Lewis, if you'd like to start.
Yeah, just want to quickly say that, uh, you know, go backwards, I think it was July sixth, sixteenth, maybe, I don't know, six eighth of two thousand and nineteen. And uh infamous day here in in Coventry Public Schools. Um, but fortunately, uh, we also have Mr. Longley, Jay Longley here from Envision Technologies. And Mr. Longley's presented to uh the committee before uh early on in the ransomware. And so it's been a long time, but uh, you know, fast forward, we've been hit with a pandemic and um, you know, our priorities have been safety. Uh, of course, this is all about safety too. We saw um, you know, cybersecurity, uh, gold medal winners um from our our school. Uh, Mr. Longley is also working with Mr. Kettle on providing some supports and experiences for our our students. So I asked them to come back tonight. I think it's 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 well overdue, but um, I think it's important to kind of twofold. One is to talk about where we've come since that 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 morning in July, when I I couldn't log into my computer and I had a phone call with Mr. uh Murphy at about six twenty in the morning. And he called back and said, don't touch anything, you know. And from that point on, where we've come uh in terms of just uh, you know, our our whole infrastructure and and safety and the training that we'll be putting in place, some that we've already put in place. And then the other part of this is just looking at our systems, our our wiring, our wireless access points. And Envision's been a great partner with us. We've realized that we need to have third party in this. The days of us being an expert and this is nothing to do with Mr. Murphy or Mr. Lennon. Um, um, you know, in in their team, but it has to do with, the world is changing so fast. And so we're very fortunate to partner with Envision Technology. So having that, I I've asked them to come tonight and put forward a presentation and more importantly, answer any questions that the committee has or the public has. But uh, we have a great partnership. We've put a lot in place. Um, and a lot more is going to happen. We're going to see a lot better connectivity. We start the school year next year because of the work of these two individuals and so many others. So having said of that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Murphy and again, I want to thank them for being here tonight. All right, I'm going to share my screen. Let me know if you see it. Yes.
See it.
Great. So um, as Mr. Lever said, um, we've been working with Envision since that day in July. Um, Mr. Longley had a big part of this, um, uh, all of our planning since that day. Um, so um, he's going to help out with the presentation here. All right, so we're really going to have three parts to this presentation. So the first part's going to be uh talking about the steps that we've taken for protection against.
talking about the steps that we've taken for protection against the future event, our antivirus, our backups, monitoring and patching and an employee training program that we have coming. The second part will be the steps that we've taken to mitigate downtime and if, if an event does happen. And if, when we're talking about an event, it could be some kind of cybersecurity event. It could be a fire, it could be any kind of.
Sprinkler that goes off.
Right. Sprinkler goes off and ruins some equipment. And then the third part of this is going to be an update on the wireless project that we have going on. You have anything to add, Jay?
No, no, doing well. I just want to say that we're not gonna say specific names of products. So this is a matter of public record. We want to keep Coventry Security at the forefront of this. More than happy to have the conversations in private setting. Happy to acknowledge the products we use, the, the products we've implemented. But to keep the, the, the security of Coventry in place and to keep threat actors from not fingerprinting your network, we're gonna intentionally not talk about specific product names, but we'll talk about products in general. So if you have any questions like that, if you want to take anything else offline, I'm more than happy to have additional conversations to fill in that information.
All right. So the first method for protection that we've really beefed up is antivirus. We're now using an enterprise-grade software suite that uses artificial intelligence. Every computer that we bring online inside of the, the school network gets the software. It's automatically as soon as they're brought onto the, onto the domain. We can manage this from anywhere. We can activate scans from, from a console, web-based console. It's definitely a much higher grade than the ad hoc solutions that we're using before, before all of this. Anything?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so I'll jump in. There's two different types of antivirus. You have the antivirus, legacy antivirus that had definitions out there that said, this is what we knew, you know, it's scanned for that. Artificial intelligence overlaying that upon, you know, the, the legacy versions of antivirus looks for anomalies, has anomaly detection. It looks for patterns and things that are one-offs, things that you wouldn't normally see with, with regular platforms. So having the, the artificial intelligence on there brings the security for every single workstation up to the next level. So we believe in that zero trust security model where, you know, we wrap security around every endpoint to the, to the point that we think that there could be threat actors within the environment at any time, but secure every endpoint, but still make them productive. So so with that, what do you do?
All right. The next big thing that we've beefed up is our backups. We did have data backup in place before the event in 2019, but those data backups were also compromised. We've come up with a, a new, a new solution for this where our servers are virtualized. They're backed up and replicated offsite to a secure location. If there was an event, we can turn up a disaster recovery site within hours to mitigate the amount of downtime that's happening. And if there is some kind of major event, we could even turn up this site from out of our region if, if we needed to. Definitely a huge, huge upgrade from what we were doing before.
Yes. So the threat landscape has changed too. So on top of disaster recovery, threat landscape has changed. When we initially started this, you know, engagement, when we started working together as partners, having a secure offsite backup was the way to do it. Threat actors have actually been attacking the backup system both locally and remote. So we've restructured, you know, the town or the, the school systems backups to fortify against these ever evolving attacks. Aside from that, you know, and just the regular events, should you have, you know, sprinklers go off or any other type of events that could, you know, impact the district? We can, we can basically spin up your site and we can move it between regions pretty quickly. So if the town is affected, we can still move, you know, learning to various other regions to allow the kids to, to continue to work effectively. So you're not stuck within Coventry, you're not stuck within North Island. It's a very portable system. Any questions? Okay.
All right. So the next big piece is making sure our systems are all updated and patched in a monitored kind of way. So we did have automatic updates turned on to all of our computers before. We now have a system in place that manages all these updates. We decide what update will be going out to the systems. They're deployed on a staggered basis in case there's some kind of issue with the, the updates. So we can roll back. And we also have the ability to monitor the health of the system. So if there's a server that is suddenly running low on disk space, then we'll get an alert and we can look and see why that may be happening and take care of that problem before it becomes something that causes downtime.
Yeah, we're also able to do trending and analysis on this too. So Jim and I and, and Mr. Levis and I all get together and review the system as a whole. We see, you know, the issues that are going on throughout. We identify areas that we can centralize and mitigate the issues. So that way users aren't impacted day by day by day with the same number of issues, you know, overall. We try to attack it from a central location. As far as the insight with the tools, it's not just desktops and servers that we can actually see. We can actually see everything down to the port level. And every connection that goes through every wireless access point, you know, with the new system that we're putting in place too. So if a kid, you know, or just student or a threat actor is on the network and they're sending malicious traffic through the network, we can identify it and we can, we can block it from happening within a very short amount of time. So it's that extra level of insight within the environment and the actual level of management you have now is, is, is on par with enterprise-grade systems.
And then the last big piece of the protection is the employee training program that we're bringing online. So I mean, this, it's a huge part of this, the, making sure that our users are able to identify phishing scams when they come in and how to protect themselves against these threat actors that are trying to essentially rip them off or do something worse to us. So we have a, a training platform that we are just about to roll out. It'll be rolled out sometime in May. And our teachers, our staff will be able to access this training at any time that they want. It's completely online. Anytime, anyplace that they have internet, they'll be able to access this training.
Yeah, I, I think it's exactly, it's very well said, Jim. So Coventry's taking the lead on this, you know, they're actually pulling a lot of this training in-house, which I, which I applaud. We work as partners in this when they have questions, when they have things that they want to work with us on. We, we're certainly there to assist, but you know, between Jim and Matt internally there, they're doing a phenomenal job of bringing the training in-house, centralizing, keeping tabs on it. And then rolling out a plan, you know, not only just for today, for this year, but an ongoing plan too. So I'm sorry, I flatter them on this.
All right. So the next big part of the puzzle is the mitigation in case an event happens. And that's how we can keep business moving, even if there's something going on. So mostly that involves us moving our servers and things that were running inside of our network before to cloud-based services. So the first one of these is a product called Mosaic. So we were using NutriKids and NutriKids was about a 12-year-old product. We were two versions behind. And that was running on a server that we had hosted in. The new system is cloud-based. So that this is something the lunch managers can access from anywhere. They don't need to be here at the school buildings to access it. It's much better with syncing with Aspen. It does a fantastic job with free and reduced lunch and keeping those numbers true. It's just a huge upgrade. Like I said, we were, this was 12 years old when we were placed there.
So Mosaic is a, is a cloud-based system right now. Mosaic builds their own applications. They, they host their own applications. They secure their own applications. There's no better company to understand what it does, how it does, and to secure it than, than the vendor themselves. So it's, it's great to see NutriKids moved off to the person or the company that can, that can supply it to you in a way that you need, you know, today and moving forward.
Next big one is, I'm sure you've all heard about Keystone. The town and the schools both moved from Phoenix to Keystone. So Phoenix was, Phoenix has been around almost as long as I have. So it's, it's pretty old. The most recent version that we have was running on a 10-year-old version of Microsoft Access to give you an idea of just how old it was. The, the company actually retired the product in July. The Keystone server is hosted outside of the school network. Once this really kind of got up and running, even the people that were working remotely during the pandemic were able to access this without having to dial into the, the school network first to get to it. So just safer and more flexible for the users. And if there were some kind of event, then they would still be able to keep accessing this and keep business moving, keeping people to get paid.
This certainly has reduced the, the surface of attack, you know, if you should have that moving forward. With a lot of the measures that we've already put in place, I feel that the surface of attack has actually dropped dramatically. You know, and this is just another, you know, another place to reduce risk. So.
All right. Now, the last one of these that I have is Google and Aspen. Now, we've been using these products for many, many years. Both of them are cloud-based and both of them get regular updates to increase their security and flexibility with the addition of new features. So I only put this in here because these two things were really not an issue for us during the attack. These two things were not affected. So really wanted to kind of move the other things that may have been affected into a similar kind of category so that that happens, it won't stop things from working, stop business from happening. All right. So the third part of this presentation is the new wireless system that we have. So I just wanted to give you a quick background on the E-rate process. So back in late 2019, working with Mrs. Manjali, I started, started the application process. It includes a formalized bid and Envision in this case did win the bid, the formalized bid that we put out. Anybody that wanted to bid on it had to come do a walkthrough. We did these walkthroughs right before everything was shut down for the pandemic. It happened like right before it happened. So the E-rate, which is run by the FCC, approved our plan in late July. And in Coventry's case, E-rate covers 50% of the project. Now, the application for E-rate doesn't, there, there's no obligation for us to, to move forward with it. If we just say, sorry, we can't for our half of the bill, then we, we don't do it. So my goal is to each year apply for E-rate and try to find a way to put this amount into the budget so that we're leveraging this every year because this is essentially spending $1 and getting $2 of stuff.
Yeah. So the E-rate actually helped do a lot with many schools, you know, schools are, are using it more and more and more to pay for, you know, equipment, ongoing expenses, things like that. There's different categories for it, obviously. The equipment and the wiring was something that I actually put in place back in 1996, 97. So a lot of the stuff we're tackling, you know, through this E-rate project, I'm, I'm excited to be a part of it. I think it's been a great, a great move forward, greatly forward. It's, it's great to see the evolution of it as well. So.
They came through the career and tech program and the career and tech program of the, it was those students along with some National Guard volunteers that installed the original wiring throughout our schools. So he's very familiar with it.
Yeah, I was hanging the wires.
So we did get approval from the FCC and, and E-rate. So the project was kicked off in December. What we're doing with the project is replacing all of the current access points that we have throughout all the buildings. And in addition, we're putting access points in the rooms that do not currently have one. The wiring subcontractors have been working on the distance learning Mondays and we've been coming in on Saturdays to run the wires that are necessary and to actually put the devices up. The activation of the new system, we will be starting that in May. Hopefully by the end of the May, all the elementary schools and the middle school will be up and running. And because of how big the building is and the complexity of the layout of the building, the high school is gonna have to wait until summer. We anticipate that will be done before school starts.
Yeah. So essentially it's, we're over 400 access points throughout the various schools and, and we're configuring a program, hanging them, you know, working with Jim and the team. And it's, you have to let up each school individually as they all go back, the, the traffic all flows to that central hub. So this Coventry High School is a very complex network that requires a lot of moving parts. So due to the complexity, like Jim was saying, you know, we should be doing that, focusing that on the summer as opposed to where we're gonna be doing the, beginning the elementary schools, the actual lighting them up within a couple of weeks. So.
All right. So just a little bit about the solution. And again, we're not gonna name any product names here. This is, I, I don't know, way back when, when I spoke to you guys about this stuff, we were talking about the different versions of Wi-Fi. So this is Wireless AX, which is known as Wi-Fi 6. This replaces the Wi-Fi 4 network that we are currently using. New access points throughout the buildings and new network switches as well. So one of the, the big pluses to this system compared to what we have now is there's a cloud-based controller. So the controller controls all the access points, the configurations and the security and, and all of that. And currently the system that we have uses hardware controllers that sit at the high school. So if there's a power failure or something at the high school or, or we've had one of those controllers fail, then the outage is much greater. So with this new cloud-based controller, if there is an outage at the high school, then all the other schools would still be independently working. And the Wi-Fi network wouldn't be down at all those places. It's overall, it's just a, it's a modern system. It's faster, it's more robust, more secure. It's, it's just better in every way.
So we're able to track the location of every access point to every single classroom throughout the entirety of the district. So it's, we know what's going on at any point, you know, at any point in every day on any access point. So we have so much more that we can do, so much more that we can troubleshoot and expand upon and build from. It's phenomenal system all around, you know, and like Jim was saying, it doesn't have to be here to manage it. It can be anywhere to manage it. So it's very robust.
All right. So just a quick overview of other things that are going on right now. So a while back, Ms. Manjali and I, we negotiated a new contract with the current copier company that we have, where we were able to get all new machines and a managed print portal as well for less than the contract was before. So what we've been able to do is install a managed print software. The teachers are now able to print from their Chromebooks. It's just much more secure, a lot less waste. And it was less expensive than what we were using before. The grade three to five Chromebooks have finally been received and they are being processed. Yes. And I'm hoping that these will be rolled out in May. The six to 12 Chromebooks that you guys approved a couple meetings ago should be delivered in early summer. So those should be ready to distribute to students so that they're ready to use them in September. And the new website project is underway and we should be going live in May. And what is next? So we are looking to, as a security enhancement, migrate our directory system to Microsoft Cloud Solution called Azure. It's more flexible, safer, and it will give us some options if there's something that happens.
So yeah, I want to just elaborate on that. So as far as security goes, think of it in terms of number of data points, right? So there's no other company in, in the entirety of the world that gets more data on a daily basis than Microsoft. I think they're in the order of about 8.6 trillion, with a T, data points per day. To my understanding, the next closest company. To my understanding, the next closest company is Barracuda, who gets in the order of 10 to 12 billion with a B per year. So Microsoft gets a phenomenal wealth of information on a daily basis. They're able to see, identify, and track most recent threats. They're able to take entire environments and wrap them into a nice ecosystem as opposed to having various silos of information that don't talk well. So they can build maps, they can identify anomalies very quickly, and it wraps that zero trust security model around every endpoint. They make them mobile, make them portable, make it secure. So you don't have to sit in those four walls anymore to have the security that you can be anywhere. So great solution.
We're also looking to, I filed for E-Rate for 2020, the E-Rate year of 2021, to replace the balance of the switches that are not going to be addressed in the proposal that we're working on now. Those switches at the high school are not quite as old as they are at the other buildings. So hopefully we get approved for this, and then we can start talking about whether we can do it or not. The, we're, we need to start developing a plan to refresh our agent computer hardware in the classrooms. We have a lot of computers that are 10-plus years old that we're maintaining. Every computer that we have, excuse me, is running Windows 10, but a lot of them are old. You know, we've upgraded RAM, we've put in solid-state drives to kind of boost the performance of these computers, but they're kind of long in the tooth. So I'd like to look towards developing a multi-year plan to address this and keep us current so that we don't have a lot of this, this stuff where everything is old all at once again. You know, that's a big, big thing, but I think it's something we need to tackle. During the summer, I'd like to meet with the Policy Committee to revisit all the tech policies and keep them current, especially in light of new devices going out to the grade 6 to 12 students. We need to relook at our password policies, make sure that we're using the best practice. And this changes frequently now. Where it used to be a password that changes all the time. Now there's a lot of people that are saying, well, maybe you don't change it all the time, you just make it more complicated. And how to be a sentence or something like that, so.
Microsoft's newer model too is implement conditional access. So know each one of your users where their normal behaviors are and allow them through. Wrap multi-factor authentication on it and never change your password. So set that your password once and securely, multi-factor authentication, conditional access, and leave it. So Microsoft themselves are recommending changes throughout when it comes to password policies. But you have to have all those two other security measures in place before you decide not to change your passwords.
Right. And then we will continue to implement new features of Aspen with Mrs. Martin and her team. We've done a lot with the past couple of years. It's sometimes, it's sometimes hard because you don't, we don't see what we've done until we turn on and look at the road that's behind us, and all we see is how far the road is ahead of us. But we have done a lot, but there is still a lot more that we could do to really maximize the district's investment in Aspen. So that's the last slide that I have, but I do want to show you one other thing before, before I start taking your questions, if you give me a sec. So I wanted to give you a quick preview of what the new website will look like. So we've been, Mr. Coward and I have been working a lot with the Schoolpoint folks. They've been extremely accommodating because we do make a lot of changes and change our minds back and forth. But we're kind of really zeroing in on the final, final, for the moment, product. And we should have some more news about this really soon. That's all I have for now.
Wow, that was great. Okay, I'm sure our members have some questions. So I'm going to start with Mr. Pearson. Do you have any questions? You know, that was a lot to digest.
I love this topic.
No, you didn't.
I don't really, but, but it's a necessary thing nowadays. I'm very encouraged by the work that I see has been done so far. Thank you for this. It hopefully will help again start to reduce our exposure, reduce our risk for future cybersecurity kind of issues. Throw, I'm taking notes, sorry. So I have, I have questions, and I'll start with my first statement. Yes, definitely looking forward to some policy work around this. Not only with, you know, we have to look at all devices, and I know there are very few of them, but it probably makes sense to start looking at district-issued mobile devices as well and some policies around there, like again, making sure that, you know, all the real applications are installed from, from a trusted source, you know, like whatever it is, Google Play Store or iTunes Store, depending on the type of operating system the phone is running. I'm going to start with the easy stuff, then I'll ask a couple challenging questions. And I don't expect answers on a lot of these, sorry. That's the kind of questions I'm going to be asking. I like the fact that you're considering dual-factor authentication. I have seen this in the, in the private sector where I don't have to change my password as frequently as I used to. I won't tell you how often I do, but let's just say it's longer than before. But we also, my company has dual-factor authentication. So when I first log into my network, you know, I have, I have a couple different ways. I can, I can authenticate through another device. It's a smart thing to do, it helps just mitigate local attacks. You know, if someone gets a hold of a, of a device and starts trying to crack a password, makes it more challenging for them to do if you have that, that other authentication method. Another thing we may want to look into, I'm not saying we have to do it, but look into especially on sensitive devices that have a lot of personal information or sensitive records on them, is actually start doing hard drive encryption. Just a thought. I know a lot of, you said a lot of things we're doing are in the cloud, but in case someone has, has files stored locally on their device that again are of a sensitive nature, meaning personnel records, student records, things like that, sensitive information like birthdays, health information, social security numbers, the whole gamut. It might be another extra measure we could look into in the future. So those are the easy things.
Let me answer to that just a little bit.
Sure, sure.
We don't have a large, a large amount of laptops that are deployed like that, but we do, we do have encryption enabled on the drives.
Oh, fantastic, see, there we go. My trickier questions are going to be around, actually, you answered one of my questions on Keystone. I do have a follow-up question around the Keystone. Like, we own, we own that piece of software and it's just running in the cloud? Is that what I'm hearing here? Or is this really hosted by, by the third, by the company, the Keystone Company? Like, do we, is it our software we're running on, like Amazon Web Services? Or, or is Keystone itself running the application for us when we log into their, their cloud application?
So could that be something that we talk about offline?
Absolutely, let's talk about that offline. Well, I'm just curious about, my question becomes around integrity. If we're using, so I guess my broader comment on situations like that, if we are using a vendor like that, you know, we can have all the backup protocols in place for our own systems or things we're running in the cloud. If we're using any kind of vendor, so take Keystone out of the conversation entirely. But if we are using a vendor who's hosting our data somewhere, you know, I would hope that we are, we are expecting that vendor to have the same kind of backup protocols in place. So that, that is my general kind of observation and question around that, and we can take that offline.
I can, I can answer that real quick. So Jim and I have been working towards an IT overarching IT governance policy. The guide to governance policy will establish certain metrics like that, you know. How often do you audit a vendor? Do they provide information to you as far as their backups or retention, their SLAs around restoration of services, things like that? So we are, and that has been underway, we're going to pick it up a bit more this summer.
Excellent, excellent. And someday we'll get to the point where we can start talking about DPAs, but I won't talk about that now because that's a different topic. My other question is around Internet of Things. So I don't know how much of our, our infrastructure is web-enabled. I'm glad to hear we're, we're monitoring our wireless access points. But again, probably something else we want to take offline, but I'm hoping that at some point we're, we're taking measures to protect our, our infrastructure, like if we have a building management system and there's a piece of hardware that's, that's running. You know, these things definitely typically run different operating systems. It could be SCADA or whatever the coding is to run these, these systems, like on our HVAC system. Want to make sure those kind of things are protected as well. If we, if you look at recent, recent news, it didn't get a lot of headlines because of the political climate at the time, but there was a huge breach down in Florida, Tampa, where someone had hacked into the water system and tried to, potentially tried to poison the entire city of Tampa. You know, on a smaller scale, we'd want to kind of make sure we're protected from those kind of attacks as well so someone doesn't hack into our HVAC system and burn everything out by overloading it or doing, doing something nefarious. So is that in our roadmap as well to make sure we're looking at those things?
So I think that most of those things right now are hosted on Windows machines that we have protected. But that is something that we definitely will need to keep on the radar. If the bond passes for a new middle school, for any of these school projects, we need to make sure that those things are protected, just as the current systems would be. I definitely will check in with Mr. Martin about that.
Okay. Other than that, I don't really have any other additional questions. Thank you both, thank you, Mr. Murphy, thank you, Mr. Longley. Thank you for your work on this. We've come a long way since July 2019. And of course, with cybersecurity, you know, it's a never-ending thing, I understand that. So thank you for what you've done so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mrs. Coloney, and any questions or comments?
Ah, yeah, actually I have a few. Thanks again for the presentation. I, I just have a few questions concerning the training and how you're going to train employees. Are you going to give, you said you got a training, you know, where they can access anywhere. You're going to give them a timeframe that they have to complete this?
So I would say yes, I would say that that's still being determined.
Okay.
This, I think is going to jump in here.
So we have a lot, as you can imagine, we have a lot of initiatives right now in professional development land. You know, we're doing a lot with curriculum, we're doing a lot with a few different areas. And so technology is another piece that we want to address. So we're trying to come up with a balanced approach so that we can continue to do the PD that we need to do in all areas and not just focus on one area. So we've met with Mrs. Aronakis, we'll probably meet with her again shortly, to talk about how we can deploy this training in a balanced way so that we can continue to do, doing work in other areas at the same time. The amount of training available that Mr. Murphy was able to secure is, you know, probably as many hours as we have available this year. And so if we were to use just our in-service PD time, the whole, the whole year would be just on technology, and, and we can't do that. So we're trying to find ways to balance that out a little bit. We're looking at synchronous versus asynchronous. We're looking at a few different ways to address that issue. So we're not, we know we have to do PD, we just have to figure out exactly how we want to deploy it.
And just to let you know, I, I go through this every single year. I, this, we actually have a web-based program out there. It takes about 30 minutes, you go through it, they test you at the end. And then, you know, so you have to sign off on this every year. And so that's why I asked that. Because obviously, you know, you, you want to kind of, you know, reiterate to the, to everyone that you need to be, you know, you need to know about cybersecurity. You need to be careful in what you're clicking on. And that brings me to my next question. Say you have your email, is there anything where you can click on an icon that will, say you think that there's something that's, you know, potentially damaging? Is there any way that you can click on an icon that would take that and like put it into like email jail, so to speak? So you can take a look at it?
So, so, yeah, so there are measures that, yeah, so we've employed certain measures. I'm more than happy to speak to you privately about it. I just, I want to keep certain security precautions on a public record.
Right, no, no, I'm just, I'm asking that because that, that, and, you know, and again, we get emails all the time where, you know, where we have to click on a little icon, and it's like either you click on it or somebody happens to click on the, the.
You guys there?
I think we lost her.
I think we lost her.
I think we lost her too.
So at a high level, we can just talk really quick about it. So there are technologies out there called safe links and safe attachments that if you have a threat being sent towards you, it can sandbox those, detonate them if there's a potential payload in it. And if there is, it takes care of it, doesn't affect your system. If there's no potential payload, you know, you're able to access it as normal. So there's certain other measures that you can put in place, and you know, I don't want to get into specifics, but I wanted to put that out there that there are these technologies, so.
All right, yeah. Hopefully she'll be able to join us again soon, but Mr. Murray, I'll move on to you. Yeah, she left, and I think she has to log back on.
Use more cybersecurity, apparently.
Yeah, she must have been passionate and clicked something, and that was the end.
Well, technology. Thanks for the presentation. I just keep thinking like, what are, what a difference to yours makes, right? I remember having a technology presentation, probably, I don't know, less than six months prior to that attack. And the topics of discussion were not what we're discussing tonight, right? We barely touched on cybersecurity. It was more about software and general hardware and budget. And we left it at that, and then wasn't long after that that we had a massive attack. And since then, we've gotten much more in the weeds and we realized how deficient we were and the need to bring in the expertise. And that's okay, because the thing is, I take it all as in is we're responding, right? We, we had a hit, we took it, we got through it, and we responded. And it sounds like you're responding very, very well to it. I do have a couple of questions, a couple of notes. I, I will say that I, first off, I appreciate Member Pearson's points he made on dual factor, the hardware encryption, and especially IoT, because on the building committee, thinking about buildings, everything is going to IoT devices. So, and we know that the HVAC system, specifically if the middle school went down when the malware attack happened, and that was a problem, there was a big cleanup because of that. That was, we probably don't even have half of what we should on IoT implemented in our schools right now. You know, especially if new schools come online, we could be looking at, you know, beyond HVAC systems, you know, locks and, and, you know, different devices that we can control remotely, right? If that gets infiltrated, we're in real trouble. So I appreciate the, the putting it out there and we, and the fact that hopefully we're thinking about that. Question on like vulnerability assessments. I know we talked about the little icon on the email that may put the payload in the thing, but just have you done vulnerability assessments? We've sent out those emails and scored and see how people are, if people are opening up.
So that will be part of the training, the training package that we have?
Okay, so yeah, the platform allows for, once you get to the training, because you want to, well, the platform allows you to test your user base on a weekly, daily, or monthly basis. You know, we recommend monthly basis. You test your user base once or twice, put the training in place. You train them as far as the tech vectors that they were most vulnerable to. So we not give them so much information that's not applicable. You focus it on what, you know, what their needs really are, and you test them, and then you edge them along. You just give them little nudges and say, okay, you failed this, you know, here's a little bit more information on how to prevent it next time. So it's a, it's a great platform to use.
As someone who failed that test once, I can tell you I never did it again. You know, I consider myself fairly tech savvy, and when you fail, it brings it to light. Like, maybe I'm not so tech savvy. Or we just, you know what it is? Or we just, you know what it is, we get busy, right? We get, everything's fast. They open it up, oh, okay. And then it makes you pay attention. So I appreciate that you're doing that. On the E rate, Jim, you mentioned that we're spending a certain amount, we're metering out every year, right? Ideally, we'd get everything done. We just get our $2 back for the $1. But do you know generally what we spent last year? I know we, you know, I I know this was a big topic in the budget and the budget needed to pass, so.
So are you saying, are you asking how much we spent on the project?
How much did we allocate this past year towards that access point improvement?
So I believe the amount was around 275,000 that came out of the the ransomware settlement.
Okay, so we did, you know, the good thing is we went forward with it regardless, because this was the best thing for me in that budget. Remember, I kept saying, E rate, let's let's take advantage.
Right, right. Right, we we originally had a plan in place to defer some of the devices that we were going to purchase. And and the referendums just kept failing and that 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 amount for the devices and for what we're going to use for the E rate match went away. So the the settlement allowed us to actually tackle the entire project, so.
So we, you know, I think the biggest point for us is, you know, that money was, we're lucky to have the, I guess, lucky. Lucky to have the ransomware money, right? But we can't always rely on that. That's one time money. We need to start incorporating this in the budget because we get the $2 for the $1 investment.
Right.
So
It's money that we're leaving on the table. We shouldn't be on the table.
Exactly. So I hope we can continue to invest in that. I think it's a great return. And a and a great opportunity. I wish I had it at my work. You talk about old Windows platforms, you know, that's what we're dealing with. And to the point, cloud based platforms, although they could be vulnerable, I think they're one of the, one of the, well, we saw this with Phoenix. You buy a program and instead of investing in the updates, you run it out as long as you can till it's exhausted, it's vulnerable, and then you get attacked. And now with the cloud based, you're ha, it's more money per year typically. But you're getting the updates when you're less vulnerable and everything seems to be moving out of the natural, so. Couple of last things. I appreciate the websites going online. My question is the URL. Are we going to keep the same website address? Because I, if I Google our address, and I know a lot of this has to do with optimization. It's it's a difficult address. Is there any way, have we looked at changing URL?
So we are going to keep the same one, but one of the things at Schoolpoint, part of this, the service that we we purchased will be to get us listed higher in Google and take care of those issues with the Google searching. A part of that is because our our site is is a Google site, even though you go to a different URL to get to it, it's still a Google site. So you want to think it's the the case, but Google struggles with categorizing a Google site. So they've assured us that once we go live with all this, the issues will start to go away and win. And we will, we will rise in our own search. So
We we brought that forward in the very first one or two meetings. That if we were going to keep that URL, that would, it had to show up in the search because people cannot find our website through a Google search.
No, I can't find it. It's like, I'll be looking for research and unless I know the exact URL and I type that in, there is no Google return on our website. I get Coventry, Connecticut. Which, by the way, if you remember the website person at Coventry, Connecticut slides, because he probably found it. So kind of comical, but I I appreciate the point. Hopefully we can get that up and 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 higher on the search. So for everyone, because it's great to have a nice site, but you've got to be able to get to it. So I'm I'm super excited about the new website. I think it's it's needed. Hopefully you can build on that. Along with that, have, are you going to plan the beta test that at all and get some response back from staff, community? The only reason I ask is, you know, it'd be, it'd be nice to have a little feedback from a small group to say, you know, maybe we should tweak this, or I found this a little hard to navigate.
So we actually have just started doing that. So our administrative team was just given access to start working on their building sites. And they kind of got their first look at it this week. So I would anticipate that we would increase that circle more and more a little bit before we officially launch it.
Perfect. Awesome. Well, I appreciate all your work on that. I know developing a website, regardless if we're building it in-house or just dealing with the design teams, it's a large lift. I mean, done it myself and so I applaud you for getting up. And actually, it was fairly short amount of time, I think, you know, it wasn't that long ago, it was approved, I think it was January, right? And I got that online.
Mr. Murray, the other thing I wanted to add to that is we're also doing sort of an audit because we're, we're moving over the information. So we didn't pay the company to just pick up everything and drop it into the new site. We are, we're going and moving things over. And what Mr. Murray, Murphy and I have found is that we've been able to identify things that need to go away, things that need to be combined with other things or housed in a different location because it doesn't make sense. So we actually are kind of completing an audit. And when we trained the principals, we kind of said the same thing to them, that when they set up their sites, they can kind of do an audit of what they have. But what we did say to them is, and Mr. Murphy and I have to work this out, is there will be some autonomy so the schools can be creative and individuals individualistic, but we are going to have a number of things that are going to be required for each school to have on their sites. So there is some some level of consistency.
At the same time, though, the sites will be designed the same way. So what you saw, the pictures at the top and then just the general hierarchy of the site will, they'll look very similar. Going through each school has their own colors throughout the entire design. So I know that's, that's kind of a big thing right now, like district site looks like one thing, Black Rock looks completely different, the high school is completely different. So there'll be more of a unified theme throughout all of them.
Yeah, not only that, we have like Weebly on wine, GoDiving on, you know. So, yeah, I I get it and I appreciate it and the fact that we're building in some vanilla box into it. That's easy to navigate because you know where the the clicked items are, but along with the individuality, I think is great. Last thing, I promise, because I know it's, you know, we still have a lot to go. But it's a great topic and I want to make sure, you know, ask these questions. So we just came out of COVID, well, we're not, we're not out of COVID yet, right? But we're, we're getting out of COVID. We found that we need remote workplace policies and and equipment, right? You mentioned we have machines, our individual machines, many of them are outdated. And it sounds like we don't have that many laptops. My question is, what are we doing for remote work? Equipment and and support specifically to to invest in that should we encounter another incident?
So the vast majority of our our teachers are using Chromebooks. And they, those are in the the order that is supposed to be coming in early summer. So those will get replaced. And most of the remote workers that I mentioned about the laptops, a lot of that was purchased just as we were heading into COVID. So none of that equipment is extremely outdated.
Okay, so I, yeah, I guess I was talking more administration based.
Right, and that's mostly who we're talking about is the administration.
And they're using Chromebooks for?
So most of them are using laptops that we just purchased.
All right, all right.
Purchased within the past year.
Okay. Which is great. So so it sounds like we're, we're equipped to handle another emergency if necessary.
Hopefully.
Relatively?
Relatively, yes.
Okay, but if they're, you know, obviously if if there's things that we can do to beef that up, knowing the new environment.
But those, those certainly would need to be included into a hardware cycle, right? Like, even though those are fairly new, there is, there is an endpoint for these things. So I'll use Mr. Levis as an example. His laptop is not what we would consider on the old side here, but I I feel like it's getting to the the point where we probably should start talking about replacing his laptop because he uses it all the time, uses it for all these things, he uses it everywhere he goes. So it it's, to me, it would be better to replace that before it becomes a problem than to try to respond to it as a problem.
So and I and I probably should know this, but you know, it's details of the budget that unfortunately it's difficult to decipher when you're looking at 800 lines. Do you have a line item in the budget where it's, you know, rotational equipment?
So a lot of that kind of stuff is spread throughout the budget. So that's, that's something that I would like to kind of clean up and and clarify.
Yeah, I think helpful to to hold the feet to the fire on on a budget item that is strictly to for preventative, call preventative maybe, but it's real rotational on equipment that instead of taking things, I I know that municipal nontality has been traditionally. We'll use it, it's like a, it's like a car. We'll use it until the tires fall, right? It's going to be like a physical plant. We'll wait until there's holes in the fenders and the floorboards and then
We have lots of holes.
We'll use it some more. You can't do that with technology. It just doesn't work. I mean, you can't do it with vehicles either. That's debatable, but definitely not with technology. I would just encourage that that we we look at trying to to parse that out and and keep that preventative. So thank you. I've taken a lot of your time, but I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I know we lost you, Mrs. Kalunian. Did you have any follow up questions? You're on mute. You're on mute.
No, I was basically, you know, I I was curious as to how they were going to train, you know, and
Yeah.
they were going to do it on an annual basis and so on and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to answer that, Jim?
Well.
As to how often?
So we're still in the early stages rolling it out. So I I would say that necessarily be to have everybody trained by the end of school this year. But I I guess I don't, also don't see that as something that necessarily ends, you know, people are trained, that's it, it's done. Like, I feel like it's something that we need to keep, keep going on. And as new people come on, they they'll have to get trained as well. So I guess, I guess I don't really have a definitive end date for that in mind because I feel like it's just ongoing.
So I want to echo that too, yeah.
I agree with you because that, you know, it's something that, and no matter how much you get trained, you, there's always going to be that one email out there that you're just going to, you know, say, oh, gee, click. And then, you know, the whole system's gone. So, no, I I totally agree there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kalunian. Mr. Florio, any questions?
I actually went through what Mrs. Coolian just said. I clicked on the wrong thing and I lost all my data. And it took a lot of work, about a week's worth of work, but I was able to get all the, all the data back. Recovered it and really learned about phishing and about how to I have the best system available. It it cost me a lot of money. And it does every month, but it's well worth it because I can just open and close and my credit if I choose to. And whatever, I'm talking about credit scores, that's how deep they got into it. You know what I'm talking about? And it was, it was around the same time that the was interesting because it was around the same time that the school was hacked last, last July. And I was going crazy. Because when they have that information, it's devastating. And they they prey on people. They actually prey on people and they they enjoy it. They really enjoy it. And I never paid them. I called the FBI. I wasn't about to to do any of ridiculous, pay the ridiculous amounts that they wanted. And I got my information back and the Nigerians were were found. And through some people that I know with the federal government. And I tell you, it was an experience. And thank God you guys exist. Because I never, I would never want a school system and I would never want to go through that personally ever again. So all I can say is thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your efforts. And Mr. Murphy, thank you for everything you do because you're the man behind the curtain. And we'd be lost without you and we'd be lost without you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry. Thank you.
Certainly, I just want to offer up, I'm I'm available for a conversation. I can certainly just, I just have an open conversation with you offline. Things to look out for too, you know what I mean? Because data exfiltration is a scary thing. Once they get it, you know, not only do they encrypt it now, they take it away and they use it and they sell it. So there's ways to prevent it. I'm I'm certainly a target due to the nature of my business. But I think most public figures are anyways too. So it's always good to to have just a private conversation and figure out ways to fortify ourselves so that you don't fall into it moving forward. So at any point, I'm more than happy to sit down with you and we can, we can certainly chat about it.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Very much.
My only final comment is this, that this was an excellent presentation. And really, you know, updates us on what's been done. I'm just so impressed. When I read this report before your presentation today, I was like, wow, oh, great, oh, good, oh, lovely. Oh, every time I read something more that you you guys have accomplished, basically, I was like, oh, wow. And so it's like a never ending battle trying to keep up with security. You guys know that. But it's it's never ending. And there's going to be more sophisticated things and more sophisticated ways and new ways to crack systems. So that duo authorization, authentication, I think, is really a good way to go. We have it where I work at Brown for lots of sign in. And we just recently, I'm not sure, I think it was in reported that we had trouble with, they they cracked certain parts of our system, some, some we had a cyber attack where so now when I lo, when I log into my, through the VPN to look at my machine at work or any of my stored files in the the file space, the files that Brown, you know, holds for me, space where I can find documents, I I can't do it the same way as I used to. You basically have to go through, you have to get, and even just logging on to the VPN, they check to make sure my home computer has the right software on it to protect it. And now even at Brown, when I'm on the campus, I used to be able to just go to my file share, my campus file share and look at my data and look at a file. No more. You have to go through the VPN. You have to have certain software on your computer. So, you know, it really changes the way you do business. And I suspect that's just going to continue because people just are more and more clever in their ways to get around, you know, your security. So I'm I'm really happy. I just have one quick question because I know we have to move on, but how many, I assume that administrators and maybe some principals are able to, well, I don't know, do they use like a VPN to log into like a a static machine maybe, or can they have two machines, like a machine that they have in their principal's office, for example, and then one at home and they can actually look at what the files on that particular hard drive look like? Or is that not even done in Coventry?
So our administrative users, the the people at the administration building, many of them have that. It was particularly important for that. That was the only way for them to access Phoenix. When that was a, that was the case. With the migration of all these systems to cloud based alternatives and the the need for that diminishes greatly. Which makes it more secure.
Right.
And I just wanted to take a moment, I mean, I I think it's super, super important for us to have a partner like Envision because of their exposure to all kinds of things and all kinds of industries. To to be a great partner to there, there's just no way to keep up with all this stuff. And they work so hard for us. And I just also wanted to take a moment to thank Matt Lennon and Mark Salvos for all the hard work they do for us as well. Sometimes unsung heroes, you know, and a lot of the work that they do.
Yeah, I concur 100%. Mr. Coward, did you have, did you want to speak? I saw you on mute.
I was just going to say what Mr. Murphy said, with us using the Google platform, the using a VPN is not so essential because all the documents that are in Google can be accessed from any device.
From anywhere. Great. Well, that's, that's good. That's, I'm not, that's From anywhere. Great. Well, that's, that's good. That's, I'm not, that's the beauty of the cloud. So, I get it. And, and thank you so much.
One more thing just before.
Okay.
I know there's a lot we got to get to. So, I have one request from all the committee members for the new website. There is a place on there, there's profiles created for you and one of the, is, one of the things is a, a picture. So, if you could send me a glamour shot of yourself. So, I can upload it here.
I was going to do stick figures of them too. You don't come fly.
Yes, I can't wait.
That's also a solution. I, I mean, it's a solution.
I can't real, I can't wait to see the new website. I mean, just that little flash and, and I have to tell Mr. Murray, I never have trouble when I Google search Coventry Public Schools. I put Rhode Island and then once my computer knows that I'm going to be hit, hooked, you know, I'm going to be looking at that, but it comes up every time now. I see the website on the side and I do it because I've gone to Coventry so many times Connecticut and said, why don't we have a website like theirs? And of course, it's not ours. And so, but the new one is, is, is very similar and I just am so excited about the fact that we're getting a new one. So, I will be so grateful to see that when it's up and running. So, I, I thank you both for all the work you're doing. Like you say, your partners, the people that work on computers and fix things throughout the district. And we are so glad to have you as a partner, Jay. So, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't know if there are any, anybody out in the public that would like to comment. I'll just give it a quick, oh, we have a hand up.
Josh, you're up. If you can just name and address the record and unmute your microphone.
Josh Clements, 10 Gentry Farm Drive. Quick comment and then a question. So, the comment is 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 infrastructure. So, you know, we need to continue to invest in IS over the years. So, glad to see that investment in the roadmap plan for the future. And the question, we talk about training, right? The end user is the weak point. We're here with school committee members and their Nigerian adventures. Right? So, how are we training the students or how are we coaching, teaching students how to interact with the internet emails and prevent phishing spam, right? It's not just the teachers, educators, administrators, but how about the, the student body as well? Right? Just positive experience, you know, this was the first year my daughter ever used a computer. She received a Chromebook in the kindergarten class. So, that was kind of her first experience. So, good experience, but how do we, you know, train students to not fall for some of these scams as they evolve?
Yeah, so the computer science curriculum work that we actually spoke about a few meetings ago happening at the middle school, there's actually an elementary component that has been taught through the media center through, with the librarian. So, there's an elementary version of computer science that they get during library and as I referenced in another meeting, a lot of people think it's just coding. It's actually not coding. It's internet security. It's being a safe user. It's knowing how to interact appropriately online, how to do a, a research i- in a way that is appropriate. And that would carry into middle school and that's why we felt it was so important to have every middle school student have a computer science class. And then, you know, most of the lift happens between elementary and middle, but then at the high school where, you know, all the kids are one-to-one, you know, that there's a lot of opportunities, I think, embedded in their day-to-day because at that point, they've been using their computers pretty much for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Coward. Thank you, Mr. Clements. Any other comments from our attendees? Seeing none, I just want to have a final thank you for our two presenters and it's lovely to see Mr. Murphy in the flesh and not just the symbol of Coventry Schools. And again, thank you, Jay, for joining us tonight. It's been a pleasure to see you again.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. It's a team effort and I appreciate, you know, the, the opportunity to, to be a part of the team. So, so thank you. It's been a wonderful experience.
Oh, you're welcome. We, we, we're, we're very lucky to have the people we have. Okay, so let us move on to agenda under item number nine, which is the FY22 budget update, including efforts to mitigate structural deficit, which was our reference number two. So, Mr. Levis.
I'm going to start off and then turn it over to Mr. Sands. You know, I think we've talked tonight, you know, we all know we, we were level funded this year. We're in a pandemic. You've seen what we've accomplished. You know, we start off with celebration, our students, but behind those students, there's so much that takes place that you're all part of. Obviously, our teachers, there's so many components, but we haven't lost sight of that. And then, you know, my, my first experience coming on board, I think my first school committee meeting was, I remember Dr. Lindberg and Mr. Pearson talking about one of our, maybe it was digital use policy. And, and then walking through the district and seeing the infrastructure or lack of it and, and nobody's fault. Or maybe it is, but you see where we've come from that and like, you know, Mr. Murray said, we had a, you know, six months or eight before where we were ingrained in terms of technology. And then you see, despite the challenges we faced, you know, you wouldn't know we're in a pandemic if you listen to the conversation and, and I hope you you recognize too, we've had a lot of conversations. I've had a lot with the committee publicly and, and Mr. Murphy's been at most of those, all of those, and we've taken that to heart. You know, the partnership, you know, Jay, Jay Longley is a Coventry grad. He lives in Coventry, the owner of his company, Envision Technologies, lives in Coventry, Todd Knapp. I mean, so we partner, we network and, and, you know, we never lose sight. And what I'm hearing through that whole conversation is, and I know there are town council members on here that, you know, our passion, our commitment to the quality of, of, of services, because we hear that. We hear that often. I hear that at meetings, public meetings. What are you doing about this? What are you doing? Every single day, we're doing something. And, and we're looking at the budget and looking how we can improve. And, and, you know, I'm so proud tonight just listening to the technology because it involves everybody. We involve all of our players in this. This involves students. I'm glad Mr. Clements brought that up. You know, it involves our educators, our administrators. There's so much that's going on and you know, that kind of ties into, to the budget. You know, I feel like we're all, you know, I, I, I myself and I apologize when I get defensive. I know the other night and I, and I, I wrote to Mr. Blank, he knows on, he's on here and I appreciate Mr. Pearson, you know, I made a comment about population and it wasn't really germane to the conversation. Mr. Blank brought a good point up. We've lost a thousand kids. We have lost a thousand kids, but there's a lot of mitigation that we've done. You, you know, before I got here, not many, you know, not too many years ago, you closed the school down. And that's a whole political nightmare in itself in terms of how that kind of transpired. Mr. Coward brought up, brought up how we've reduced at least one school, six classrooms, you know, which could be 125, you know, just 125 students in, in one school. We've done that every year. We go through, we go through numbers. We look at adding classrooms, reducing classrooms based on population. We do that at the middle school, at the high school. Our class sizes have increased. And yet, we kept that laser beam focused on students. And so, we're willing to have that conversation and, and for another time. I do want to let you know, I kind of struggle with this budget process because, you know, I give a lot of credit to the town manager just jumping in, you know, not knowing the history, not knowing what's going on and, and being responsible. I have to tell you, he's been so gracious working with me, requesting information, going back and forth. Mr. Sands, it's been here a month. He's been, you know, working, you know, night and day, trying to get information because we want to give them with the most, most current information. I did reach out to the council members because every year, you know, we've offered them to come in, to sit down and, you know, I just reached out today and I think three out of four so far are coming in to sit down next week, myself, Mr. Sands, because we really want to make sure they have the opportunity to ask, you know, while we want to be transparent and it can be public, it's, I get frustrated myself because somebody will ask me a question and I know I'm just not answering it directly because there's so much more to it. And I feel like, you know, if I'm going to do due diligence, I'm going to give them all the information, but I know it frustrates people. I can see it on their face and that's not my intent. So, I want to thank them for agreeing to come in next week. You know, we're still looking to meet with Ms. Mills and, and Mr. Marshon to sit down and go through the budget, but recognizing how much they have on their plate. We're hoping to do that next week too. So, I want the committee to be aware of what we're trying to do to make sure that people are informed and, and that we are being extremely transparent. So, and I want to thank the committee too. This, I know this has been a long meeting or it has a potential to be, but I, I, I truly am sincere when I say that. And I said the other night, you know, you supported us putting forth what we need to educate this, this community to meet the needs of our students. And I appreciate that more than you can imagine because that's what our charge is, you know? I mean, you guys definitely don't go and just sit in these seats because there's glory behind it. You know, I don't think anybody, unless they do what you do, understands. I can tell you just individual conversations I have with different school committee members because of their passion or commitment and awareness of certain things behind the scenes, you know, and, and I appreciate that. And so, you know, we've been talking about, you know, I listened to the town council the other night and they were able to use monies from COVID to, that was targeted for emergencies, but they're able to, to use it to pay police salaries. Now they have $2.3 million of surplus that they can deal with at the end of the year, which is great. Don't get me wrong. We are not in that luxury. We've been using our funds to fill holes. And even though strategically, we've been pulling one-time, you know, purchases out as much as we could because that's how we should use these additional funds. But there's no doubt about it, you know, we, we had the ransomware money. Nobody wanted to have that attack, as Mr. Murray said, but it allowed us to capitalize on E-Ride, right? So, if you're in our buildings, you've seen us, you, you've seen me freeze up Mr. Sands the other night. We struggled with wireless in our buildings and nobody's fault. But you can tell, Mr. Longley said, he helped put the wiring in, in 1997, right? I don't know much maybe about technology, but I know there's been a lot of gain since 1997 and 2021. So, that I do know. So, you know, my point is, is that we keep the focus on what's important in education, which is our students and families, despite the challenges. We don't make excuses. And I hope tonight has demonstrated that to our community, to our, your colleagues, you know, in the municipal side, to our colleagues on the municipal side and we're going to do everything that we can do in terms of trying to attack this structural deficit that we know is not sustainable. And, you know, I don't know if we're going to put the, the PowerPoint up, Mr. Sands, or if we're going to have Mr. Murphy do it. But just want to let you know that, that, you know, I want to thank you for the support because your leadership and support of us, you can see, I think, we, we're attacking systems. This isn't just fragmented work anymore. We're attacking systems. You know, you heard, brought up, you know, we've done a lot of policy work. And we're seeing how we're pulling that in, how that's really driving what we're doing. You know, again, I want to thank Mr. Pearson and Dr. Dixon. We've probably had 110 policy meetings. So, we plan on doing everything in our power to address this deficit over the next, you know, year or so, using the funds that we have. So, I just wanted to kind of pull in together a lot of different things around where we stand on the FY22 in terms of communicating with the town. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sands now and I think I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sands now.
One minute, please. All right, let's see if we can get this presentation going. Does everybody see this?
No. We don't see the presentation. We see your screen.
You see my screen. Okay. Mr. Murphy, I apologize. I tried, but it did not work. Mr. Murphy, you still here or did you leave?
That's okay. I can share my, share. I have it ready.
I apologize for that.
No worries.
No pressure, Mr. Sands.
I, I want to thank the students coming on earlier. It's such a, a pleasure to see the students and to see what you're working for here at Coventry. And I can't tell you how it really sort of livens me up a little bit to, to, to see the students that we're working for, why we're creating budgets, why we're going through this process. I think it's really important to have that every so often. I know I'm sort of saying things that have already been said, but I just want to emphasize it from my standpoint, it's really important that we have this. And thank you for having them on today. Okay, so we've been talking about structural deficit ever since I came on about, let's say 35 days ago. And I wanted to get away from the actual word of structural deficit and, and sort of describe in my, in the way that I look at this. I look at this, we have one-time funds, a lot of one-time funds right now. We have $7 million worth of one-time funds. And one of the things that I look at this is that this is really deficit spending. You have $7 million of these one-times funds and if you don't use them for one-time purchases, but you, you offset expenses, what you're doing is you're doing deficit spending, which, which works as long as you have a machine behind it that basically is looking for other areas where we can save. So, every time we use the money that we're getting from COVID, we are based and, and, and we use it for our expenses. What, all we're doing is saying, okay, we're going to use it now and we hope that the revenue comes in later. And then when they, and when they air, when the revenue doesn't come in later, what does that create? It creates this deficit. So, it is structural in nature because we haven't filled it because it's our regular expenses. So, the, so I, I wanted to just sort of look at it from a different standpoint and, and get rid of structural and just put in deficit. Because that's what, every time we use one-time funds, that's what you're doing. In the case of this past year where we were level funded, you could see that we had a funds balance of over $2 million. And we had to use that to, to cover our expenses coming forward. What did we do? We created a hole. And that was deficit spending because even those funds, the, 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 the funds balance that we had was really only one-time funds. So, we still have a hole. Now, what are we going to do next, this year? Are we going to once again put money into into the budget? I- i- in other words, are we going to increase our revenue or not increase, but just fund it so that we are sustainable? And that's, that's really what I think we're talking about is the sustainability of the school. And sustainability can't be talked about unless you're also talking about what is the consumer price index? Consumer price indexed is, is sort of how much it costs for us to live on an individual basis. So, everybody here knows that every year, certain products go up in price, groceries, all those sort of things. And, and we have to cover that. It's, it's not on the slides. I'm still speaking without the slides. So, what, what I wanted to do was make it really simple. Okay. We have areas of concern. Building upkeep. That's been a structural deficit, I would say, for quite a while at, at Coventry because what happens is revenue comes in from both the state and the town. Sometimes it's on, i- i- it works and, and we have a, a, a great budget and it, it's just perfect and it's, you know, we have a balanced budget and it really works well. And sometimes we get overfunded and sometimes we get underfunded. And that's what, that's what, that's what basically all budgets are. We do the best that we can to, to predict exactly what we need. And then, and, and then we hope that all those pieces fall into place. Well, in building up upkeep, those, those times when we don't get the, the funding that's necessary, one of the areas that really sort of gets affected and something that rides already, are already discussed or actually put into play with the maintenance requirements is that buildings are the ones that don't get is that buildings are the ones that don't get continually get funded because they, they sort of absorb any loss in, in, in revenue. And so right now we're in a, ish, you know, we're looking at our schools and, and we see where, where that deficit is. It's, it's plain, it, it's, it's very obvious. Another area of concern is, um, staffing. I mean, one of the great things that we have with these COVID funds is we're going to be able to ramp up, you know, and meet the needs of the, you know, support our students from what they've lost over the past year with the staff, the interventionists and the special educators and the building subs. With the building subs, what we're doing is, is, is we're, we're basically looking at it and saying, you know, let's not have just subs coming in and out, let's have people there that they, they consistently see. So what, what this does is we're, one of the, there's two things here. We need a lot of these areas filled. The interventions, the special educators, support staff, we need a lot in, in, in the schools right now. But what COVID is giving us the opportunity to do in the COVID funds that we're using, these one-time funds, is that we're going to be able to monetize and, and, and see how these funds can really help our students. And, and we're able to monetize it and show that the effect going forward. Okay, so that's fantastic. But don't forget, it's one-time funds. So can we actually put them into our budget? They, if, you know, if, if we're funded correctly and, 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 and we get the money from the state and from the town, I would say because the one-time funds are going to last a couple of years, we may be able to build some of those positions into our budget. So that's an area of concern because we give them all this great help and, and all the students depend on this. And, 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 and we're giving this, this fantastic service, but then it goes away. So these one-time funds, are they, are they creating a deficit? No, because we've stated that this is not going to create deficit, but is it going to create a deficit for our students? And that's, that's what I worry about. But we, like I said, we have two years to work on that. The health and wellbeing of staff, we can't really compromise that. So this is an area of concern because we are paying for the, for custodians and nurses, the floating nurses, the nurses that will help out when another nurse is, has too much to do. And then the custodians to keep the, the buildings clean. We can't do without these, but we're funding it with COVID. So is that an area of concern? Yes. Is that a deficit? Are we deficit spending at this point? Yes. But do we have time if we're funded well in the next two years? Or are funded to the levels that we, we feel are necessary? We can, we, 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 we can put, put that into, in, in, into our budget. And then professional services. Yes, we, we could use one-time funds to, to really attack professional services and spend some of that COVID money on professional services. But what happens two years from now when we need those services? And, and it hasn't been funded?
Can I jump in, Harold? I think one of the points we're making is that we don't have a choice, right? We know that we're going to put money into interventions. We know that we're going to support our students. Our, our belief is that it will help them ramp up. But the, the, you know, I had a conversation with someone earlier today and like, we pull the Chromebooks out, right? We're using funds so we can pull the Chromebooks out. We don't, we didn't have to do that, right? We could, we, we're trying to be fiscally responsible using the funds we have. But we have to be honest that, you know, we have a lot of work ahead of us. We don't have an option. We're going to make sure that our people are healthy, that we have the supports that we need. You know, we're going to invest in our technology like we have, but this is not the ideal way to fund. And so when people make comments about, you know, you have all this money, you may not need additional funds. It's like, you know, two years ago, you know, you, you can look historically and we've talked about the cuts and that. So, you know, part of this is we have to use these funds also strategically. We're going to keep that focus on students. But I think the point Mr. Sands is making is that we need to be aware that these funds are going to go away. September 30th, 2022 for, for the two point.
September 30th, 2023.
Well, no, 2022 for some of the funds, we have 2020, I think for, for the others. So Jim, can you go to the next slide, please?
We could, we can go to the end, end slide at this point because I think, I, I think we've sort of discussed all this at this point. Yeah.
Next slide, Jim.
Okay, then, so, so, so how are we addressing the structural budgets? In, 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 from the building standpoint, um, I think we're, we're, we're addressing that from a bond perspective to, to finally bring every, all the schools back up, um, but concentrating on the ones that really do need it. Then the, you know, as I, as I was talking before, the district will monitor the educational staff on the COVID funds and be able to analyze it and monetize it so that the district's educational and structural deficiencies can be, you know, so we can look at that down the future and see how it, how it goes. The nursing and custodian positions that hopefully, you know, from, from the health, the health portion of, of the structural deficit may have some roots in the health clinics that we've talked about at the last meeting. As far as the custodians concerned, that is something that we will have to cover in the next two years when the funds have run out. And hopefully we have given us our, a, a little bit of time to get there. And then finally, the, uh, the, the Chromebooks. The Chromebooks are, are, we have, the, the school has spent 1.3 million dollars on Chromebooks, which over a three-year period is $433,000 that we're saving over the next three years. We're going to have to pick that back up. So what I'm saying is, you know, and that's, you know, and, and that's in the budget. So we're, we're making a hole in the budget, but at the same time, we're, we're using that hole to cover other expenses. So it's, it's, it's a give and take and we have to be very careful with what we're doing with the COVID money. And then finally, one of, one of the things that I think is, is going to be a great benefit from now and into the future is these minivans. We also have the, using minivans to, instead of the statewide buses and see if we can incrementally decrease that, that cost, which, which, which I think is incredibly important. And then curassage with the, um, net metering. And we're looking at a huge savings on there. So the, the school is looking and, and, and doing everything that it can to start cutting, cutting as many costs as possible. And, and, and we're constantly doing this, but we have to be very careful with COVID funds because if we continue to use it to, to stop the, 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 the revenue that, that needs to come in from the town and the state, then, then I think, I think we're, we're going to run into, uh, we're going to run into problems. And.
I just want to add one thing that I, that I think is important. And I want to tie it in here too, because I think in terms of performance and how we're functioning, it's been made, you know, in, in a priority on the council side about a performance audit. And, you know, I've experienced that before and, and again, I'm just one person, but I, I spend a lot of time in this district and there's always room for growth. Let, let me be, be clear about that. But I'm, I'm pretty confident that a performance audit would come back and, and acknowledge a lot of the things that are going well, a lot of the changes we've made or are beginning to implement. You heard a lot about many of them tonight, um, around the technology side. But I think in structures and in systems that we've put in place, just the governance work that we've done is so crucial in terms of a performance audit. And I think that'll, it, but it also highlights some of the needs and the deficits in, in, in terms of a community and support for education. And so I, I would hope that the council would really push that because I haven't heard that come up the last couple of, of budget meetings. But I think that'll, that'll help us because it's all about building trust, right? And I think Mr. Sands is right that we have to monitor these funds. The community has to trust that we are doing things. Keeping the focus on what our, what our charge is. And, and I think that we, you know, they need to believe that we are being fiscally responsible. We've been clear, we would like to be in the, I'd love to have the luxury, I, and I'm sure the, the committee would too, that we have $2.3 million of surplus that has no strings attached and that we could really look at, we could put into capital. We could put it into other areas. But again, we have to be looking at how we're going to use our funds to, uh, to address any, uh, any, any gaps that we have. You know, that's a reality moving forward, depending on, you know, uh, what's going to transpire. So, um, we just wanted to give you an overview of the funds, but not, you know, like, because we hear, you know, let, use the funds, use, you know, we have to exhaust our COVID funds before we could seek any support from the community around COVID expenses. But as we see that there's, um, we're concerned about that. We wanted to bring that forward. So, um, Harold, thank you and, and, uh, Ms. Patton, I don't know if the, the committee has any questions.
I'm sure they do. Um, thank you, Mr. Sands and Mr. Levis. So I'll start with Mr. Pearson. Questions on the presentation?
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Interesting way to look at this. I do appreciate the effort to, um, continue to explain this not only to the committee, but of course the community members, council members, uh, attending the meeting, uh, to hear this. Yeah, it's, it's clear that we need to spend the money we have, which, which, you know, I understand the, the politics behind it. You know, we, we don't want the community to get the impression that we have, you know, a windfall of, of COVID money that's going to help carry us through, you know, forever. This is not, this is not, this is money that will go away. And if we spend, uh, the money, if we choose poorly in how we spend this money, then we're going to be in a, in a pickle, oh, he's a nice word. It will be in a pickle in a couple of years when the money goes away. If we choose wisely and start to, uh, spend the money in ways that will help us in the long term, you know, address academic needs of our, our students. You know, the, the, or the needs of our students. I know some of it's social, emotional, academic, of course, is, is, is important in my book. If we do that, then, then we're, we're in better shape if we can, you know, apply the funds that way. The, the only objection I think I have, I don't really have a lot of objections. It's, I'm glad we're looking at this and why we're trying to tackle this. The objection I have to the slide is, is there was a statement on the slide about, and, and this is probably a point of discussion, this is my opinion. The only way to address the, the infrastructure needs of our schools is through an $85 million bond. Uh, well, yeah, maybe today, you know, but, but again, I will get on the soapbox that I've been on for a while that if we allocate capital properly in this town to our schools and our town side of the budget, uh, it eliminates or greatly reduces the need for such large, big bonds every once in a while to do a mass fix of all the things we've been neglecting for years. So we, you know, I, I don't want to neglect that fact because I'm worried that taxpayers, voters will see that phrase and go, well, well, forget capital budget, they don't need capital budget, they're, they're just going for the bond. Well, no, the truth is we need an ongoing capital budget to maintain our infrastructure. Then we won't necessarily need such big stinking bonds every, every 20, 30 years to, to do a massive project because we've been taking care of the things we have. So again, that's my only objection. Careful how you word that. Don't want to take focus on the capital, ongoing capital need with, with, you know, the other goal of, of getting the bond because we have, you know, the building committee has been working hard on, on some projects. That's all, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mrs. Colonian.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Pearson, um, what he said. And I also, you know, um, we bring this up all the time and, you know, when you talk about that, that money, that one-time money, you, you'll get it for a couple of years, but we can't use that to balance the budget. And, you know, and that's something I think that people have to understand that, you know, it's one-time money. And if we constantly use it and say, well, this, the town doesn't have to give us anything or the state doesn't have to give us anything, then, you know, we, we are going to be in trouble. So I, I agree with Mr. Sands. You know, I thought it was a really good presentation. It would really, you know, kind of brought home exactly, uh, you know, what we've been dealing with. So I just thank you and that, that's just all I had to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Colonian. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, so, uh, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate your perspective, Mr. Sands, on, on the budget and trying to twist it a little bit. I, I appreciated the dialogue the other night with council. I thought there were some thoughtful questions. You know, I'm very, I, I want to thank the superintendent for reaching out to the council members and inviting them in and really trying to explain it offline because there's a lot of things that I think at, at these meetings, these work, work sessions, you know, we can get in the weeds, but sometimes it devolves because we really don't have all the information in front of us. So sometimes it's better to actually just step back and say, we'll get together and we'll, we'll work it out, right? We'll get you the information you need. So I'm, I'm glad that's happening. And, and so to talk about the budget, you know, I've been saying for a while, right? I would call it an artificial budget. I've said for the past two years, and I was very adamant on this last year, that this year was going to be a disaster. I actually think we're extremely lucky that COVID happened from a budgetary standpoint. Because if we didn't, we would have a major shortfall this year. Because if you look at the amount of holes we had to plug, if we went through a normal year last year with the increases that we had, we couldn't raise enough money through the tax increase, even if we went to 4% this year. So we actually have voluntarily, I'll call it, plugged some holes. We got forced into it last year because we didn't get a budget passed. So we had to plug a hole with the savings. Okay, but that does cause that, that deficit. Now we're further plugging holes and I mentioned this in an email I sent out, that I'm not in favor really of plugging the hole on the capital side, right? And the reason is, is because that needs to carry forward. The 230,000 we have in the COVID budget, while I understand that we're, we're doing it as a good faith effort to plug another hole and it could be COVID related, right? It qualifies. But is it right? Because once again, we're plugging the capital hole. And that needs, that's going to create a deficit going forward because the state is now mandating that we, we fund that to the rate, next year, I think it's 3% of our total operating budget. So that's money that we could have spent along with the Chromebooks, right? We could have said to the town, listen, that, that's on our operation side. We need more reading specialists. We need more math specialists because that's what the COVID budget is for, right? Student supports only. But we've chosen to plug those holes to try to help. So why do I talk about this? I talk about it because the other night a point was made that $700,000 may be requested from the town to now out of the fund balance, right? Maybe. And, and we may need funds beyond the 1.8 million that we're requesting and the 600 from the state. And it all sounds like a lot of money. I don't care if we had $100 million in COVID funds. It's like Brewster's Millions, if anybody's ever seen that movie. You can't spend it fast enough and it only goes to one place. You know, the, the problem with federal money is they tell you, you have $100 million, but you can only buy pencils with clowns on them on Thursday because there's so many restrictions. So we've done, I think, what we could, and my point being, I think we've done what we could to use funds that could have been allocated somewhere else, right? We could have done more student support. But we've chosen to try to do the responsible thing and try to cure our structural deficit, which in fact was created because we haven't passed a good budget. We haven't funded education properly. So now we're in the hole. So now we're in the hole and we're trying to dig out of it. So when we have these discussions going forward, I hope that when we're talking to the council members, we can all discuss that on a relatively intelligent level, that how this stuff was created and how that money, although it seems like a lot and things are coming in, we're basically trying to backfund the shortfalls we already have. And the last point I'll make is this, and it's not because I don't support what Mr. Sands is saying, some of the points that he made about keeping custodians after this, keeping nurses after this, keeping student support. The back of the napkin math, it tells me that there is no way we're going to even be able to, with the cap, the state cap, raise enough money to keep them. Even if we want to, the only way we're going to be able to do it is to cut expenses. Because with the contractual raises, including the SRP that we just passed, and the benefit loads, that's likely to eat up most of the increases we would get over the next couple of years. So when we get to the end of the rainbow, we're still going to have that structural deficit. And I don't know how we're feasibly going to be able to work those numbers. Even if we have built in for the next 30 years, 4%, I don't know how we do that. So I'm not saying it to point out the solution, the problems, because I hate people who just constantly point out problems. I'm willing to help with the solution, but I think we need to have a more thoughtful dialogue on the realities of the numbers, right? How much can we actually raise, even if we went to the max for the next five years? And how many resources we can afford with all the other fixed overhead that we have? Because the truth is, like, if those don't match up, forget about asking for anything else. We're going to have to look at how we're going to cut expenses while keeping more services. That doesn't work. It's, it just, you know, I hate to be the very bad news, that's not how math works. So perhaps this is a little too much and maybe I'm digging in a little bit, but these are the things that keep me up at night. Because I picture myself as trying to be a problem solver and want to be a part of the solution, not just sit on this committee and be a lump on a log asking easy questions, right? As Mr. Levis knows, Mr. Carrick knows, Mr. Sands probably knows by now, I try to come up with ideas and ways to fix things, right? Not just stand by. But I'm stumped on this one. I am truly stumped. And I don't know, without additional infusions, that we could actually future repair our budget, right? Without the state really saying, all right, we're going to commit more state funding in perpetuity. I just don't know how we get there. So at some point, hopefully we'll have that thoughtful dialogue, really with outlines of numbers attached to it, right? So what are our, the one thing I haven't seen in a while is, what are our fixed overhead over the next few years, just based on contractual increases? What's our, what's our prospective benefit load? Right? We know that. It's difficult to predict state funding, but you know, we know we can project that level, right? But where do we land with relative to the tax cap of funding revenue generation? And then what's left? If any. So I know that's pretty heavy. But I needed to put that out there because we're having the same conversations. And I, while I appreciate the structural deficit and the COVID fund conversation, not to be Debbie Downer, but I, to Mr. Sands' point, this is, this is definitely not the magic bullet. And like I said, we could raise $100 million tomorrow, it won't matter. And I think that's our response to council, too. We're jammed up, we're trying to figure this out, right? We accept all comments, we accept all questions. If you can find a solution, put it up on a PowerPoint and show me. But we're having that thoughtful dialogue as a school committee and it's up to us to figure it out. So that's all I have.
Madam Chair, can I just make one comment?
Sure.
Just not to prolong, but I know this comes up periodically, but I was in the high school today talking to different teachers and, you know, I'll be 60 in July. And I remember when I started teaching, many people were leaving education 49, 50 after 28 years. And, you know, some people would work 32, 33 years, but you start when you're 21. You know, that's putting you in your, you know, much younger than today. With the pension reform, and I'm not saying something didn't need to happen because we know that these pensions are poorly funded. But people have to work. Like, so, you know, we look at a lot of our teachers that, you know, in their late 50s would love to retire and aren't able to. And so, you know, part of our expenses, and this is nobody's fault. And I think we have one of the finest teaching staffs. And I look across the board, you know, people, and I'm not just saying that placate people, you know, I've experienced this working with them. But that's, you know, in a typical, you know, 10 years ago, we'd start seeing turnover and, you know, let's face it, you bring in a new teacher and new teacher salary is half that of a top step teacher. And we have more and more teachers now that are top step. And that's a big part of this that, you know, and I don't think we talk about it enough, but realizing that, you know, we will come to a point where you'll see a big drop off. But over the next few years, I mean, that's just something we deal with every single year, people that would love to retire. And I'm not saying they're working their butts off, but cannot. And I think that adds to this whole conversation. I know in my role, when we're looking at budgets and we talk about retirements and I can't tell you how many people would, you know, would like to retire, but they just are not capable of doing it for many reasons. So you can't neglect that as part of the conversation, I think. It's created problems for municipalities, definitely for districts. And it's nobody's, maybe it is somebody's fault, but it's, it's none of our fault. But that's a reality that we deal with. You know, when Mr. Murray, you know, talks about, you know, looking at contractual obligations, it's true. But the scenario could be a lot different. And, and that's something that's added to our narrative. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I respond, well, not respond, but bounce off that comment?
Sure.
Sorry, I know I've taken up a lot of time, but this is actually hopefully contributing.
You're taking up my time, Luke.
Sorry, Dave, I apologize. If we ever, whatever.
I'll own that.
Mr. Sands, whatever, what I'd also suggest or ask is if we did run an analysis, just like we would on a debt clip, look at the age of the staff and what the prospective retirement age is. What is our retirement cliff? Because that obviously matters. And I think it's a good point by the superintendent. But that's one thing we haven't really true, I'm sure we've analyzed generally, maybe we have, but I haven't seen it. Like, where are we actually going to see potential revenue savings based on retirement fallout? Because, because I agree, Mr. Levis, like, we are likely to see, based on the membership, we see a lot of step, you know, a lot of higher steps, we'll just put it that way. At some point, they're going to fall off en masse at waves and that's going to matter. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I think that's a good point. We don't really know the age and obviously retirement ages have gone up across in all kinds of areas because we're living longer. I mean, I'm 68, I don't plan on retiring until I'm 70 at their earliest. So, you know, we based a lot of the pension benefits on a different, a different death, you know? And so that has to be really, really renegotiated and looked at across the board in so many companies and municipalities. Anyway, Mr. Florio, I'm sorry, you're next.
That's okay, Madam Chair. I had the exact opposite impression. I did not think that council meeting went well. I think they're trying to manage the school budget. And I think Mr. Sands is absolutely correct. We still have not received the money from the American Recovery Act out of Washington DC. That should be coming in at some point. And President Biden's infrastructure bill is going to transform education as we now know it, at least what he said last night. And he has the votes in Congress and in the Senate to make it happen. So I am optimistic about the future. I feel President Biden is right on, right on target in his assessment. And I believe we're going to be receiving money for a free two-year college diploma. Now, what the state chooses to do with that is up to them. But Washington wants the money to go to education. And I think that's, I think that point should be made to the council very clearly. Because when the, when the school committee goes to the council and says, we need $725,000 out of your 2.3 million so we can do things in this town. They, Washington expects the council to give us that money. Now, how do I know that? I know that because I know people in Washington DC that are quite upset about the way the council is acting. And not specifically the council, but the people behind the council, the people that the council was supposed, were listening to. I'm not saying they still listen to them, but all I'm saying is, Madam, all I'm saying is that Mr. Sands is absolutely correct, but I don't think the infrastructure bill, as President Biden describes it, is going to be helping school districts. We're not the only school district going through this in this state with, with the council that wants to see items and they want to see clarity and they want transform transparency. Mr. Levis has already said he's committed a meeting with three of the council members. Fine, he'll meet with them, he'll meet with the town manager, he has a good relationship with them. But I can, I can assure you that the people in Washington DC are US senators are probably, probably getting word back about what's happening in Coventry. I wouldn't be surprised because I know some of them. And they're not happy, they're not happy with the way things are going. When we asked, when they, when the town gets 2.3 million and they some, some departments were working part-time over the summer while our teachers and our administrators were working right through the summer, either distributing lunches, either teaching or doing job-related functions during their vacations. They are, we're lucky. We're lucky we have a good, we have a good relationship with our union, with the SRP union and with the teacher alliance. Because if we didn't, there would be strikes guaranteed. So, and nobody wants that, nobody. So in my opinion, my humble opinion, we, we should be optimistic because we are going to get more money from the American Recovery Act. And if the infrastructure bill goes through that President Biden wants, we're going to get, we're going to be funded the way we should be through the federal government, which sends it to the state government and RIG will decide what we get. So is this a political matter? It sure as hell is. We, we need these people, we need the people in Washington DC. We don't need inertia. We need people to act. And I think from what I understand, the tide is turning all across this country. So conservatives can, can stick their heads in the sand and say, oh, no, 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 no. We know, no, no, we have to, we, but, 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 you know. But bottom line is, the tide is turning. And for those people who were around during the Johnston administration and even the Nixon administration and the Ford administration and the Carter administration, they can see that things are going to change. And I'll stop there, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, but I'm not sorry, but I'm not.
I know you're not, but I, I think we're a little, a little, a little bit off topic in the sense that.
I'm not off topic, Madam Chair. What I'm saying is true.
Yes, but I'm not sure how that's going to really filter down to Coventry. And that's our problem right now, dealing with this budget next year and FY23. Even, even the federal money is one time, you know? And so we may get extra funding and RIG might get extra funding. And yes, infrastructure bills might employ a lot of people. They'll have more money in their pocket and they'll feel better about tax raises. So I get all that, but quite honestly, there's no, there's no silver bullet here. We are still going to have a huge issue on our hands trying to fund the next few years. Even if we get through them with one-time spending, we are, we are in an uphill fight. Just, that's the way it is. And so I thank Mr. Sands for your presentation and your passion, Mr. Levis, and everybody who worked on and is working on this budget. And I thank the town council for being, they're new and they need some, some direction on how our budget is, it works. And so I'm really glad they reached, I'm glad Mr. Levis reached out to them and that they will, you know, are willing to work and look to see how our budget is, is prepared and the basis of it. So I can be, remain optimistic. I certainly think their questions are valid. And, you know, it's our responsibility to answer them. It's our responsibility to spend the money once it's allocated to us. But obviously, they still have to have knowledge so that they can support us. They can't be in the dark either. So if we want their support and we want the taxpayers of this town and our parents, everyone to support us, we have to be, you know, give them answers and be transparent. So I'm going to turn it over to the public right now. I know Mrs., President Dixon has her hand raised. So, Mr. Murphy, if you could bring in any of our public that would like to speak, I would appreciate it.
She just put her hand down.
Oh. Okay. Maybe she put it up by mistake.
It might have been a mistake.
Yeah, are there any other people out in our Zoom audience that would like to make a comment? I know we have more to go, so. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Okay, then I think we can go to the next agenda item, which is the FY21 update, including budget to actuals. And we got a very thick budget to actuals in our packet that I'm sure some of us had some time to look at. So I don't know who wants to really start this.
This is going to be very quick. I know there's a lot of information there. Mr. Sands had summarized it in our presentation to the council the other night in the summary page.
Right.
But I think the major point with this is that, you know, you can look and see that some of the revenues were reduced, you know, like the tuitions from Medicaid. But we expect that to be, you know, based on the pandemic. You know, you look at our salaries and some of our other expenditures, you know, we're wrapping up, that was as of March 31st. So those are, that's three quarters and we're about, you know, 75, 79%. So, you know, we wanted to present this, I know the council, not the council, I should apologize. The, this bill says, you know, in fairness, she's been asking for this, but I wasn't going to share it until we shared it with the, the school committee. You know, like I said, I want to, you know, and I, and I reiterate what you said, Ms. Pat, know that I, I've said this publicly and privately, that I have hope because of the council that's in place. And I may not always agree with, I don't agree with anybody all the time, you know? And I know people don't agree with me, but I appreciate the willingness to me. But anyways, Mr. Sands, I don't know if you want to just highlight a couple of the areas of the summary? And then really this is about, and again, I know we buried you with paper. We'll come back to this again in another meeting also. But if you had questions, that's what this is for, for the council, for the council, apologies for the school committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. Levis. So I'm just going to go right around to see if there were any. I know it's a big document and I, I tried to make some sense of it, but there's a lot there. So, Mr. Pearson, did you have any particular questions you want to ask Mr. Sands or Mr. Levis?
Yeah, so for the, for the audience members to know what we're talking about here, this is the year-to-date budget to actual. I'm very interested in seeing our 2020 audit. I know that's not available yet. I know there's some delays, but, you know, please, as soon as that comes out, send it over. Yeah, it's a huge document and it's year-to-date, which means I'm going to ask the question. I'm going to make you guys do the work for once. No, I shouldn't say it that way, sorry, that came out wrong. I want to make you guys do the Um, no, I shouldn't say it that way, sorry, that came out wrong. I want to make you guys do the work tonight. Cause you're always doing the work and I'm just asking silly questions. Um, so my question is, my silly question is, uh, is there anything in, in this budget to actual that's of concern to you, Mr. Sands or Mr. Levis? Like, is there somewhere where we are overspending and, and we anticipate it, it might be a, a problem by the close of the financial year?
Um, after, from, from my perspective, Mr. Pearson, um, there is nothing here that is out there, there are a couple of issues with revenue, but that's predominantly COVID-related and it's, 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 it's being waylaid a little bit. But other than that, um, there's nothing in here, everything is on, on par. Um, maybe a little under, maybe a little over, but nothing substantial.
That's good, that's, that's the answer I was hoping for, because if we had some unexpected expenditures that, that were throwing uh, things out and we had to transfer funds, that's where we get really concerned, but uh, if you're telling me that everything is pretty much on, uh, course, the course that we set earlier this year or the taxpayer set for us earlier this year, um, then, then I don't have any further questions, thank you for that.
Um, thank you, Mr. Pearson, um, Mrs. Coloney, and anything for Mr. Sands?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Murray?
Thanks for the document, a- as you said, it is extensive. Um, I guess there's just a request, and I know you're extremely busy, it's budget time. Um, but as we move forward, I guess it's a question, our fancy new software Keystone, we have the ability to output and report chart form that does rollups. So it's very difficult to line item out a hundred and nineteen pages, but it'd be very helpful to have a chart that says here's budget, here's our actual in graph form, and maybe also here would be the predicted if we were to meter it out over a twelve-month period. Is, is there ability to do that in a relatively easy format, so even, even at some point, we'd maybe do quick month lists? That's a question.
Uh, uh, yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Murray, um, I, I was trying to find that unmute button. Um, it's, yes, everything that you said above is, is, is correct, and we can go monthly. The, but I do want to add just a little quirk to that. Monthly, I have to make sure that everything's going correctly, I want to see, you know, I, I, I want to have a couple of days to be able to look at it, and it shouldn't be an issue. But what I'm asking is some reprieve, not next month, but maybe the next month after, I can, I can go from monthly on that basis going forward.
Yeah, totally understand, I mean, my, my hope would be that after we get through the hopeful budget, we never know around here, we might be in two, three, um, but, you know, i- in the next three, four months, I know you're probably learning Keystone and, and Sarah actually had to get up on it, you know, before she left. Um, so yeah, i- if we could do that, it'd be extremely helpful as a committee member, and I'm sure my fellow committee members would appreciate it. Of having a rollup in certain categories with that graph stand, uh, graph, um, format, which I have exposure to in other municipalities and, and seems to work pretty well, so I appreciate that.
That should be a problem.
Okay, otherwise, uh, no other concerns.
Um, thank you, Mr. Murray, um, Mr. Florio?
Great job, Mr. Sands, thank you very much.
Okay, that's it, Mr. Florio?
That's it, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Um, and I have nothing either, um, you know, even when I see some minus numbers, I know when I looked at it, I realized it was because Medicaid might be slow coming in. Um, maybe, you know, tuitions from other districts are slow coming in, so it's to be expected. So sometimes those numbers, you know, look horrible, but that's the reason. Um, so, uh, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable, um, what I'm really most comfortable is that, um, the budget has always been looked at by, you know, our finance directors basically in the past to say, we're, we're kind of on track, they, they kind of know it. Um, and if they, the, is it the monthly report we have to send across the street to the town council basically has to be balanced? And so if we're, if it looks like we're running a deficit, then we, then we have to ultimately try to fix it. So, um, it's been a difficult, um, budget season, obviously, because of all the things we've been trying to fill holes with, so, um, and, and, and some of the spending hasn't even happened yet, even though it's sort of um, encumbered, you know, and that's what I, I think, you know, sort of throws things off. You encumber funds because you don't know if you're going to spend them or not. I mean, that's the expectation that you will, and so at the end, if you do end up with a surplus on one line or so, um, you know, other lines balance it out so that ultimately we don't have de- a deficit at the end. Um, so I get all that and, uh, it's, it's more lines than I could ever bear, this Yoko- Yokoa, um, just is so detail-oriented, and the real shame of, of the whole thing is its cost, I don't even know how much it's cost all of the cities and towns to, to, you know, present their data in this format with all these lines. And then when you go to ride to try to see how it all compares across districts, it's not an easy task. There is not an easy way to look at this data and it just makes you wonder wh- what you, how, how, what, how is it useful? Cause I, I still can't seem to figure out how, you know, okay, so Coventry spends X on, on a particular thing. Do we spend more than, um, Wes Walwick? Or it's so, it, there, there's no real easy toolbox there, um, to figure it out, so. And that was what was promised, that was why it was rolled out originally, that we were going to be able to, across districts, look at apples to apples to apples. And maybe I'm just wrong, but I, I just don't seem to see how you know, that has rolled out in a positive way, but, um, that's just me talking. So I'm, A, I'm frustrated by Yukoa and all the lines. Um, but that's just me. Anyway, um, I, I, I'm, I don't know if there are any people in the public that have a question about what we just discussed. I'm not seeing any hands raised, Mr. Murphy.
No, there are no hands.
Okay, so I think we can move on to, uh, the superintendent's report, so Mr. Levis, you're back on.
Yeah, after Mr. Pearson saying that, uh, you know, now we're going to have to do some work, I don't know if I even want to do my report, but, uh, but I will, I'll make it brief, um, I know communication is a, uh, is a big topic. It's something that, you know, I tell people all the time, you know, you hired a superintendent and people think, you know, you're, you're an expert in this and that, and, you know, if I have a, a level of expertise, I think it's in networking, trying to connect. I know if people are familiar with Malcolm Gladwell and he has a book called Connectors, but I would consider myself that, you know, I know people, I connect people, bring resources together. You know, something we desperately need to do, um, I've been working with a, 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 a person that's a consultant, but no cost to, to us. On developing a framework, um, it's part of my, my goals, I'll be presenting to the ad staff, but it's, it's a framework. I think so, a conversation we need to have and hopefully we can have with the town at some point is um, how do we have like a communication specialist that maybe we both utilize that can, um, help us getting messaging out, and I don't know how that works. If you get to the spot where municipal side wants to give a different message than the school side, but I truly believe we have an opportunity to work as one community um, with overarching priorities and in a robust educational system and a robust, you know, uh, community, you know, municipal side that provides, you know, high-quality services. So I'm hoping that's the second part of the conversation we can have. Um, but I will be bringing it, uh, you know, one of the upcoming school committee meetings, once I meet with the, the administrators and kind of get some buy-in to the framework and, um, but again, the second part of that is, I think, really looking at a point percent, I'll use, you know, Mr. Coward, um, for an example, uh, his, his wife Jen, uh, is a writer, but she was hired by Cranston Public Schools as a part-time communication specialist. And so when you see communication coming out from the schools, that's consistent, there's a good chance that she wrote it. Um, when there's communication going out about, you know, promoting, um, information around a new program or service or getting, you know, uh, you know, information to the community and targeting the community, it may not be anybody that typically utilizes the schools, but maybe targeting another population, there's a good chance that she was involved with that, you know, she's involved with all their social media. And I believe that we would definitely benefit, um, this community could benefit from that. So, the, you know, what I'll present is a framework. And I think the framework touches all of our stakeholders, but I, I do believe we still need that person that's going to work with us. Um, but it also includes training our staff, training key people in terms of working with the media, we have much more of a media presence, you know. I think over the last couple of years, you'll see in the radio, we've been working, partnering, uh, we partner with a lot of different news stations, you've seen our commercial that's gone out for, uh, our regional career tech center and I think that, you know, so we're trying to get a better presence, but there's so much more we can do, so that's about the communication plan and then I'll be working with, with Mr. Sands and Mr. Coward on the second part about I have a meeting scheduled for next week, working with, uh, key people in our schools, our P T, PTA, PTO, members, presidents or designees to talk about the budget, um, working on like a one-page communication. Um, the following week I have a meeting that we'll, we'll be setting up, but I'd asked every administrator and different, like, different, uh, you know, athletic director, different people to identify key people that they felt would, you know, supported education would support us in the community. Uh, I'll actually be, asking, Mr. Longley will be joining me at that meeting that was here earlier, he's offered to help in terms of communicating, working with social media, helping organize, you know, messaging campaign, cause I think that's important. We need to target, I, I'm not going to target the people that, that vote no, uh, typically. Uh, not that I'm not, I don't care, they're, they're citizens and, and I'd love for them to support. But my experience is that when you look at the numbers of people that voted, we know there's so many more people that truly support leaving this community or, and I'm not saying the others don't, there are some people that just feel like there, there's no more capacity to tax and, and I respect their opinion and but I, I need to focus on those people that we know did not show, like I, I waved my little paper periodically, I have it somewhere about the twenty-five-hundred registered voters that did vote, right? So we know there's so many more out there and that's who we're going to be targeting and, and kind of from a grassroots perspective. You know, I can't tell people what to do, I can say why I believe it's important to support education. So I will follow up with you in, in terms of, of those meetings and of course, anybody that wants to attend of the second meeting, I'll make that public. So I'm going to, you know, work with our administrative team, I'll work with, uh, you know, Ms. Aronakis is, has been key in the past in terms of organizing grassroots and, uh, I'll be, you know, trying to, you know, get some, some ideas, support from her. And, um, so those are the two things I wanted to report on. The last thing I wanted to say, and, uh, and I know it's not on my report, but, uh, just to talk about Coventry Public Schools in general, we posted our position, as you were aware, we talked about Mr. Coward's, um, former position, the Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, so we posted as anticipated, but our plan is to obviously go forward with it. And I, and I just want to say that, you know, these, these are challenging times, people know that Coventry can be a challenge. And yet we have incredible internal candidates who have applied, and we have incredible external candidates. So I've received so many phone calls from different people, both around our internal candidates, external. And I think it's, it's, it's the phone calls that I've received, and I know there are many other people that have received phone calls. But the reasons why people want to come here and, and, you know, I have to step back sometimes because I get caught up at the moment, I'm frustrated, I know people are pointing out to me, I get defensive. Uh, I don't know if that, it's probably not a good thing, but I think personally it's a good thing because I care. You know, I believe so much in, in what you do, what we do. In the fact that people want to come here, like I had, you know, like, I'm thinking like, really? You know, and then the reasons why, you know, they look at our meetings, people watch our meetings. You know, I know sometimes they're long, but, you know, I remember I was at a meeting one time where somebody talked about decorum, right? I won't get into it, but I think some of you were at that meeting too, and then boom, you know. And we have, for the most part, incredible decorum at our meetings, you know, respectful of the public, allow people to have voice. They see the interaction, they see union representation show at every meeting and points that they make, I mean, people appreciate what we do, they know the leadership, they know, they know, you know, our team. Uh, they see us, you know, we're recognized, you know, uh, you know, sometimes you talk to public or people share Facebook posts with me and you, you may think that, you know, we're in the wrong business, you know, and yet we have a lot to be grateful for, a lot of successes. You saw a lot of that today, I mean, think of the work that's gone on, you know, we talked about Keystone. Look at the technology, look at the policy work that we've done, look at our students, that's what this is about. And I just want to say that it's about the culture and climate that we've created within, you know, our, our internal stakeholders. And hopefully, many of our parents feel that way too. But I just wanted to bring that to you because I think that's a credit to what you do, what we do, that during a pandemic, and this is Coventry, you know, they, they've seen that, you know, I've, you know, we've laid off three hundred and some odd teachers, they've seen that the budget was failed, not once, not twice, but three times this year during a pandemic. And yet people, we're desirable, people want to come here. You know, and this isn't the director of curriculum position where you just write curriculum all day. Right, this is one that supervises elementary principals that deals with problems, right? I mean, this is a, a, a real working, in-your-face, in-the-school supervision position. And people want to come here and, and, you know, and I talked to Mr. Anderson, I had dinner with him the other night and he says, you know, you've got to get this out there. Cause this is, this is, I, I, you know, this is so important, I think, to who we are as a community, the fact that we have so many high-quality candidates that want to be here and, and not to take away, we have incredible internal candidates that have applied. So I just wanted to make that point, not to belabor, I know it's been a long meeting, but to me, I didn't expect this. You know, I expected our internal candidates because they know what we do and they know the, the value of working in Coventry. But, um, you know, I, I, I really, I was, I was kind of, uh, you know, blown away and, and I just want to share that with you. Cause I think that says a lot about who we are. You know, you wouldn't know we're in the midst of a pandemic, you wouldn't know that we've been level funded, maybe you would if you listened to the, uh, structural deficit presentation, but you know, I just want to, you know, I, to me, it just, despite everything, it's just, it's, it was so powerful to see. Um, so thank you, thank you to everybody that works in Coventry and, um, you know, to our, our parents and our students, because despite the challenges, it's a, it's a great place to be, you know. Um, and I've experienced that just this week with seeing teachers and, and students back and, um, you know, people, it's challenging, but people love to be in school every day, you know, our staff looks forward to coming, you know, and, uh, you know, I, I, maybe I didn't realize that till I realized, saw the, the, the number of people that really want to be here. Um, and giving up some good, potentially, you know, secure position, so I just wanted to share that with you, that's my report.
Um, thank you, Mr. Levis, I, I think that's a, that's really, um, um, good for us all to hear that we have such incredible candidates because, you know, towns and cities get reputations. And, um, you know, I've been on the committee at times when, um, we, we weren't able to, um, get great candidates for some key positions because people are like, I don't think I want to go to Coventry right now. Um, so, you know, and I'm sure that, that exists across the state where some people think, I don't want to go to that town, I don't want to go to that city. So to, to get that compliment, just in this, in the sense that we've got some really great candidates applying is so, um, good to hear. And, and it really is, uh, an indication of that we're doing something right. Even, even through all the, the troubles and turmoil, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which we go on and on about. Um, there are still people wanting to come and work with the team that's been assembled in Coventry, want to work with our students and teachers. So that's really, really great news. Um, Mr. Cow, did you want to say any something, because I see you shut your mic off there?
Yeah, I, I was going to stay quiet because it's getting late, but I, I wanted to echo what the superintendent said, and then when you made your comment, it made me want to chime in. I, I think sometimes people don't know that we also have a presence in, in many organizations throughout the state. We have, uh, numerous, uh, professional organizations in the state that our administrators and teachers have a presence in. Um, there are a lot of work groups happening right now across the state and we're participating in many of those work groups and those work groups are with other districts. And we have a strong presence with Ride and, and people at Ride know us by their, by our first names, they call us on a regular basis. So I think, um, you know, we live in many different worlds and sometimes we think about what happens in our buildings or what happens in these meetings. But, you know, we've worked hard to repair any, um, any damaging reputation that may have happened in the past by making ourselves involved. involved and present in many different ways, and I think that's paid off, um, at least in this example of us.
Yes, thank you for that. I, I couldn't agree more. Um, I know it is getting late, so instead of going through that, and asking you all individually if you want to make any comments, if anybody wants to, uh, comment or ask a question about, um, what's been reported by the superintendent, just raise your hand and, um, you know, unmute yourself. Yeah, I know, it's getting to that time. We don't want to have to vote to go past ten, right? So, um, I think we're good to go to citizens' comments, so I will open the floor to any citizens who would like to comment on anything we discussed tonight, or just offer any comment in general about, um, publicly, Coventry Public Schools. And I'm not seeing any, Mr. Murphy.
All right, there isn't anybody.
All right. Um, then I think we can go to the number thirteen, which is scheduling the next meeting, and I believe our next meeting will be on May thirteenth. Is there a, uh, motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion that the next virtual meeting of the Coventry School Committee be scheduled for Thursday, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six PM.
I second the motion. And I think we can just raise our hands if, if we're in favor. How's that? Yes, yes, yes. I have five raised hands, motion carries five to zero. And, um, is there a motion to adjourn? I have nine fifty-one.
Madam Chair, make motion to adjourn the meeting at nine fifty-one PM.
Second the motion. Thank you, and if we could just raise our hands on that. And we, it looks like we have five to zero, so, uh, motion carries. And I just want to thank everybody for attending and for all your participation, and thank the public. And if the students are still listening, I want to thank them to making, making our meeting, um, sort of a, a, a happy celebration. Um, and our teachers also that were, were involved as well. With that, good night, everyone, and we'll see you at our next meeting. Take care, enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you.
Yep, good night.
Good night.